Give nod on one of the cameras. There it goes. Okay, you see it, guys? Did you miss it? Okay, thanks. I will, I will call this February 2nd meeting of the Mountain Area Town Council to order, and I think we're gonna have Cub Scab Pack 1191 lead us in the pledge. Okay, guys.
Next, council salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Hey, guys, wait a minute. Take a look. I was taking a selfie. I wanted you to see it. I'll send it to one of your pack leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Thanks for bringing them. We love it. All right, I see no presentations on the agenda. I see no guest speakers on the agenda. We have approval of the council minutes. I will leave that to the councilmen who were in attendance at the last meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I have, I have a motion and a second from anyone that you want. Actually, Chris has, Chris says he's got three changes.
Yeah, Debbie, on, under new business 10. The for Summit Ridge Forest Conservation, could just have the record reflect that I asked the town attorney to make sure there's no conflict. Something to that effect.
Okay. Well, I, I put the town attorney clarified that there is no conflict of interest.
Right. I just want to reflect, I asked him.
Oh, you went Chris out. Okay.
Same, same thing for, again, under number 10, last bullet, release of bonding. Same thing. I asked him to make, there was no conflict.
Okay, I will, I will.
And then finally, page four. First paragraph, downtown parking.
Okay.
The, the sentence pertaining to how parking meters enforce turnover. If you just add the sentence and improve the business climate within the town. Because the, the point of the exercise is to improve business climate. Those are my changes.
And my motion still stands with those clarifications?
With those changes. And I'll assume that you're gonna second that, Chris?
Yes.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I guess there's two abstentions because we weren't here. All right. And we've also got the, you've got closed meeting minutes of that day.
Yes.
You wanna move those, Bob?
Yes.
Chris? Oh, that's right, we get the public hearing too.
Yes.
That's, yeah, okay.
I thought we were doing all three at once, but...
Okay, well, we'll do the other two now, so I'll assume you're moving that. I assume Chris is seconding that.
You're sure, no, and I can reach in.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We've got no opposed, so same thing. Yeah, interesting on the, the parking meter issue. I was down in Miami a week ago, and they have meters out on the street, but money that you put in them all goes to homeless people. I mean, you don't pay, you don't actually have to pay to park. They're just meters that are around, and they go to, you know, they go to like a homeless shelter or something, where all the money the meters make. That's kind of an interesting twist. I'd never seen that before.
I guess if you're gonna be homeless, Miami's a good place to be.
At least it doesn't get cold like this. All right, we get police report. Welcome. And I think we should all have the, the packet that he gave us.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name's Trooper First Class Jordan Snedeker. I'm here representing, of course, the Maryland State Police, Mountain Area Resident Trooper Programs. I'm here to offer a brief overview of our January productivity and activities.
Sure. That's January.
We handled a total of 527 calls for service and plus 20 that occurred outside of town. There were 15 total arrests, including five adult, two adult drug violations, six warrant or summon services, one civil citation, and we also notate when we assist in the arrest of someone, and there were eight of those. Our highest call volume occurred with the business alarms, which is pretty much the usual. And aside from that, there was 168 traffic stops, including 100 citations, 112 warnings, and 38 safety equipment repair orders issued. We investigated seven vehicle collisions, five of which there were charges for each asphalt driver. We also handled 10 minor, what we call code 89 accidents, which are minor accidents, fender benders if you will, and there are two DUIs, apprehensions this month. I would just say that there's a summary of all the reports that were taken for the month. There were approximately 50 in total, and they are listed on the second page. The only other update I would give is Trooper Thompson has been temporarily reassigned to the legislative session in Annapolis on a temporary basis, and her position was filled by Trooper Horner. And also, Trooper Bonneville was also reassigned to the Barrack, and he was also replaced by...
Trooper Bonneville's been here a long time. I think he was our longest serving...
He actually was. It was disappointing to hear that. I actually have a call into Lieutenant. I wanna have a little chat about, about how we're doing. I appreciate you updating us.
He was our most long-term, stable trooper, so...
Yeah, well, thanks for updating. I was gonna ask a question.
Hopefully I control their shoes.
I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job, sir.
Both, both of those newer troopers have just transitioned to the town here. Should be fully up to speed, and there shouldn't be any, any issues with, with having, with having them onboard.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just a, a note of thanks. Trooper Snedeker, we had a local business that had a crime issue. For some reason Westminster Barr responded to it, and the business owner disclosed to me that they weren't happy with the way the issue was being handled, and the business owner, you know, we contacted the corporal who sent you to help out, and the business owner immediately came back and said, fantastic, you know. He expressed a lot of thanks for the way he handled the matter, closed it, got it moving, took care of it for him. So, again, from a local community policing perspective, that's something that we need and we expect, and we thank you for taking care of that, because Westminster was not, you did, so thanks.
No problem.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Trooper.
Thank you.
Up next, we've got the volunteer fire companies. That's gonna be Jeff and Bruce. All right.
All right, for the month of January, there was a total of 216 calls, 129 in Carroll, 75 in Frederick, 7 in Howard, 5 in Montgomery. And just a overview of the 2014 stats that we finally got together with. There was a total of 2,076 calls that we ran as a department. 1,164 of those were in Carroll, for a total of 56 percent of our calls were in Carroll County. 787 were in Frederick County. That gave us almost a 38 percent call volume in Frederick County. 89 were in Howard for 4 percent of our calls, and 36 were Montgomery for almost 2 percent of our calls. So that gives you a little overview of what we did last year as a department. And the February breakfast will be on the 15th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, up next, community concerns, citizen comments. I know we have a few people, so line up on the wall over there. And I know Larry and Mary wanted to talk, so since you guys are first up.
They do everything as a duo now that they're a singing group.
Now that we sing together, so... Larry and Mary, House Sheriff 501 West Ridge. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Let me start with a little bit of history. In 1838...
Larry, hold on a second. Where's that coming from?
It's us together with God.
Oh, it stopped. Test, test.
How's that? They're up.
Better?
Okay.
All right.
All right, go ahead.
Larry and Mary, House Sheriff 501 West Ridge Drive. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
It's the mayor.
Look, he's gonna give you that. He'll take the broken one.
Oh, still up, Wolf.
Maybe it's your hands.
Okay. We'll try again. Let me start with a little bit of history. In 1838, some railroad workers began work on the Mountain Area Rails to Trails project. At the time, they didn't know they were building a nature trail. They did not know the course they chose over Pars Ridge would be used 180 years later for the people to walk from Watkins Park to Main Street, but now it is. In 1925, BNO employees in Mount Clare Station near Baltimore began work on the Mountain Area Visitor Center. They did not know they were building the Mountain Area Visitor Center at the time. They thought they were just building a caboose, but their efforts will return to Mountain Area this summer, 89 years after it was built. In 1912, construction workers, they built this very town hall that we're standing on, or standing in. They thought they were building the Mountain Area Savings Bank. In fact, it was this building, Town Hall, 102 years later. That brings us to why we want to speak to you. In 1903, a Mountain Area citizen named Mr. William Smith began work on the Flatiron Building. He did not know that he was building anything beyond a creative structure that uniquely fit where Park Avenue and Main Street are joined. He did not realize 112 years later that his building would define Mountain Area's Main Street, but it has. We feel absolutely certain that you, the council, staff, mayor... Sorry, I lost my space. Are in a position where you have no choice but to resurrect the Flatiron Building. We sense the passion of the older residents of this town and the heritage the Flatiron Building represents. Simply put, this building has to be resurrected towards the future needs of the citizens while being cognizant of historic preservation. What we propose is that the community center conversation needs to be played into the ham we are dealt, the Flatiron Building. And we feel that if the town government needs to put up to $50,000, taxpayer dollars, in, on the table to figure out how to best insert a community center into this town, then that money needs to be directed toward the end game of the Flatiron Building. While we feel, we feel that while the Flatiron Building may not satisfy every desire in a community center, it certainly could satisfy the needs that are most evident in our town. The need for an up-to-date home for our troopers, the need for an appropriate, up-to-date museum, and finally, a need for the arts in Mountain Area, and all of it conveniently located within walking distance to Main Street.
You wonder why the arts. Mountain Area is truly blessed with an enormous life spring of talented and creative citizens in all artistic disciplines. To that end, we have the Mountain Area Arts Alliance. This organization was started by visionaries and has continued to grow and flourish. We are filling the need by offering art exhibits, concerts, social interaction, open studio time, open mic, professional theater, movies in the park, and even scholarship opportunities. You can bet as we continue to grow, there will be additional continued partnering with downtown businesses and government, additional events to enhance our town, and a continued effort to grow the arts. However, to continue growing and enhancing the arts, space is needed. We feel that that can be accomplished by revisiting the Flatiron Building, in a sense, being good stewards of what we have been given. How? Did you know that in 2013, the Maryland State Arts Council awarded grants totaling Did you know that in 2013, the National Endowments of the Arts awarded $138,383,218 to nearly 16,000 communities in every congressional district in the United States? This isn't even taking into account the private grant opportunities available. To say that the arts are funded would be a true statement. We believe that by including the arts in the community center, this will represent your greatest chance of recouping taxpayer money put towards funding this building project. The Mountain Area Arts Alliance will support and assist the town council and staff to that end. The Arts Alliance has aligned itself with the Community Foundation of Carroll County and also has a proven grant writer within our organization, and we would be happy to join forces with you. While we can't guarantee 100 percent return, we know money is available and believe we offer a supreme advantage to acquiring it. Lastly, realize the other facets of the community center, the recreational needs, can be satisfied along the way as Harrison LaShire and other opportunities materialize. The Flatiron Building is simply what we have been entrusted with. What else would you do with it? Even now, outside of storage, the third floor sits unused due to lack of ADA access and the tightness of the room in its current state. Don't we owe it to our taxpayers to make the space totally accessible and to utilize the space to the fullest extent possible?
Summing it up, we support the expenditure of funds to bring a walkable community center to Mountain Area while keeping in mind that the previous taxpayers purchased a Flatiron Building. Many of you campaigned on bringing a community center to Mountain Area. We understand the dilemma you have with the expense of the Flatiron Building. However, that expense can be turned into an opportunity for something truly special. As we said, many of you set the creation of a community center as a goal, as a campaign goal. Our strong desire is that you focus the efforts on the Flatiron Building and satisfy the arts aspect of a community center so we have an opportunity to recoup our tax dollars as well as a more suitable space for our troopers and a better, up-to-date home for the Mountain Area Historical Society and Museum. 112 years ago, Mr. William Smith did not realize his creatively built building would someday become a community and art center, but perhaps he did know, what he did know was that his building was unique enough to become the defining landmark of Mountain Area, Maryland. Thank you.
Thanks. Love your history, Larry. Nice way to present that.
Is there anybody else who wants to address this during communication? Come on up.
Hello, my name's Carl Munder. I live at 2002 Fieldbrook Lane in the Sterling Glen community. I'm here to, I guess, to basically say to speed up the request that I put in about last year in the Street and Roads Commission for speed, speed limit signs, stop signs, and slow children in place signs that seem to have been, I don't wanna say forgotten, but the Street and Roads Commission updated to the council about in May or June of last year supposedly, and nothing's been done since then. Jen Smith has mentioned several times in front of the council and stuff here that the road signs, that the needs still have not been met, and I'm just here to...
You're probably seeing the puzzled look because I'll defer to Ken.
Uh, thank, uh...
Yeah, I know, Ken.
Uh, we, I just got that a couple months ago, and, and we went over that last Streets and Roads Commission, and we forward to Barney. Did you get it, Barney? About just, you said it back, and I think I sent it back to you about the signs in Sterling Glen.
We have a list of stuff, yes.
Yes, and, because we just took the streets over, correct?
Well, this isn't phase, phase one, not phase, phase two. This is by the community park, so the...
Well, we did put one sign up for you a couple years ago, right?
Well, you, you put the stop signs in front of my house a couple, couple years ago. This is in addition to that, to protect the kids walking across the street from the speed.
I haven't, what I seen was for the new section, because we wondered whether you took it over yet or not.
No, this was for the old, the old section. Here, there was a missing...
Did you see it, Barney? I haven't seen that.
This was from this old April, May of last year.
I haven't seen that.
I'm not, I'm not sure if that was on your list. I want you to send it over to us, but...
Yeah.
I think we need to top it line and...
Right. See where we're at with that.
If we could, Monica, do you happen to have a card?
No, I can grab one though.
If, if you could communicate with Monica and just give the documentation to her, and she can make sure it gets down to Ken if it needs to commission.
Yeah, I, I will say, I remember some discussion of it, but it was like, just as I was leaving Streets and Roads, and Ken was, well, that was last May was the last time. April was probably the last meeting I was at.
We apologized.
And then Ken took over from there, but I do remember looking at, you know, looking at the corners and the intersections and trying to decide what we could do and...
I did a nice map of where the street...
Yeah.
Because basically, as announced, state law, everything is, we can't even have the state police in there policing the roads from one way because there's no speed limit signs. The state police cannot police a road without speed, the speed limit signs on it.
I've never heard of that, but there's a lot I haven't heard of.
I know. That's what we've been told and stuff, by some troopers, is word of mouth comes out, that state...
Because we have, we have a town speed limit.
Yeah.
Standard limit everywhere.
You need the speed limit sign entering a community to identify...
We have, we have a few issues towards your address. I'll just add that to the address.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably not a real, a real tough one to put a speed limit sign up if you come into the community.
There's several speed limit signs in that, because it says that you, you're, you're all getting ready to take over the second phase. It's fully filled out. People like the speed, one of the stop signs, and I'm also on the AHRA, one of the things that come up annually is speeders.
Always, always.
And before we get the request of putting speed bumps in before the council on the Street and Roads, let's try the stop signs and the speed limit signs and everything.
I'm sorry if it fell through the cracks, sir. We'll, we'll get it picked off.
Well, and another thing too, is it's possible that it's scheduled for, to have the speed machine put out to actually track speed, but they're not gonna do that while you're looking at this kind of weather.
Nah, I don't think it was ever tracked.
Because we almost, I would say, policy is we do that before we make any changes, usually.
Yeah, we just want a speed limit, so like...
Well, you're not asking for a change. You're just asking us to post what the speed limit is.
Post, post, let me, slow, slow children because people are beginning to complain again.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we can make you happy. Get the information over to Monica. We'll get to the right part.
Okay.
Can I ask the, the name of the street, the main drag?
Well, the main drag, oh, I live on Fieldbrook. You come in Sterling Glen Way, make a left. After, which is Fieldbrook. The one I'm talking about is up by the community, up by the community park farther end, you make a left at that.
Candace Drive. Candace Drive is the main drag through the...
Coming down to Sterling Glen is Candace. At the start, at the four-way stop, you make a right on Sterling Glen Way.
Yeah, there's Sterling Glen Way, which goes to Saddle...
Saddleback.
Saddleback.
When you wanna make a left on Saddleback, we wanna stop signs and stuff at that corner and by the community park going up and going down of slow.
But there's, there's already a four-way stop at Candace.
At Candace and Sterling Glen.
Just to slow the, slow the traffic down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can see it. I can see there's, there's a four-way walk thing there too.
Yeah, there's currently a four-way stop at Candace and Sterling, and Sterling Glen.
I can see that.
Mainly to stop the traffic and for the school bus stop at Sterling Glen.
Well, it does sound like something that we would want Streets and Roads to deal, and I'm sorry to...
I got something at last meeting for Sterling Glen, and I think I forwarded to Barney, but, and you asked him to send it to you. I think I sent it to you. I'm not, I'm almost...
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was like phase two or phase one.
And to Brian.
Let's, let's everyone revisit. Monica, stay on top of it. Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thanks.
Just, just so you know, a few years ago, there was a proposal to put a, 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 a rec, rec center down off Buffalo Road about the size of a Walmart, or maybe it was two Walmart buildings.
Yeah.
If that had gone through, Candace Drive would have been a speedway.
Oh, yeah.
All right, just, just...
Currently more so than what it is, but...
Yeah, just to let you know, I mean, that was, that was, that, that proposal was denied by the planning commission based on...
Oh, no.
...the planning and, you know, because of the fact that it didn't make sense for a planning...
No problem.
Thank you. Hey, thank you very much. All right, any other community concerns, citizen comments? Seeing none, let's move on. The next up is the ordinance to distinguish between parking and storage areas in industrial zone. It's my understanding we're scheduling a public hearing on that.
Yeah, they came back, it went to planning, came back with a favorable recommend, recommendation from planning without any changes.
7:15 next council meeting. Does that sound good to everybody? I mean, I don't anticipate a bunch of people showing up on that. Should I, Chris? I mean, it came from planning. I mean, there are a lot of people there.
Well, actually, it came, actually, yeah, it came based on someone trying to drive, trying to take advantage of a loophole. I, I don't imagine any of us is gonna be...
I gotta tell you, I called for a place to store my camper, to one of our local places, and they were told that they cannot have outside storage. It's not allowed by the town. So, they did a good job. I didn't tell them who I was.
March the 2nd.
Okay, so, yeah, whatever our next council meeting is, we'll start at 7:15 instead of 7:30. We'll do that at 7:15.
This will be a ad under 112.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have, is that?
Amethyst.
That is.
Okay. Uh, it had been requested that I hold this one till Amethyst gets here, but since she's walking in...
There was actually theme music playing as you walked in.
Okay, this is 2014-19, budget amendment for a request for qualifications slash proposals to provide a feasibility study, concept plans, construction estimates for community center.
Right, so I will...
You wanna move that in?
Yeah, I'll move that in, but I'll move that in with an amendment, and I don't have the text in front of me, Debbie. It wasn't in the packets. I lost it. I didn't carry it with me last time. That budget amendment, 2014-19. Because I wanna make an amendment to it when I, as I move it in. Oh, sorry, I have it in front of me. My apologies. So I'll move it in, but I'd like to make an amendment. I'm gonna change the amount from $55,000 to $5,000, and here's the rationale behind that. In discussions with the town engineer, with the chair of the community center task force, with the mayor, we asked the question, could the costing, the bulk of the work, be done with town resources? The idea again is to come up with what a rough order of magnitude cost for the facility, and the decision, the conclusion reached was yes, town resources could do the bulk of the work. $5,000, it was requested for economic study, so, so I'm moving it in, and I'm only requesting $5,000.
Okay. I will second that with your amendment, so...
Okay, and with that being said, I'd like to discuss...
Was there gonna be a PowerPoint or something?
Well, I'd like to discuss the ordinance, but what I'm gonna do is yield the floor to the chair of the community center task force. They have some background information for us.
Hi, I'm Amethyst Tyomak. I'm the chair of the community center, community center task force. We, we asked in December, we came back in January, and there was a lot of feedback from citizens in the community. The task force reconvened and, and...
Now play Prisoner of Love. Don't wanna, there was Perry Como on that one.
What we did is we just, we, 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 yes, we are moving, are making the budget amendment to 5,000, but we thought that it would be in the best interest of everyone to kind of, uh, do a small presentation of, of where we've gotten to as a, as a town and as a task force. Um, so I'm actually going... So I'm actually going to yield the beginning to Jeff, and actually, several members of the task force will...
Go to the slideshow, next to the bottom.
Or you can just look here.
Need cool screen.
No, 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 no. No, 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 there you go. No, 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 no. Slideshow's easier to hit. Hit cancel.
All the way down at the bottom in the task bar.
She can see slideshow at the top. It might be easier for her and it's bigger. Yeah, that'll work. Yeah, right there, okay.
Before we get started, if I could have everyone's attention, I'd like to ask everybody to hold their questions, let the presentation go through its entirety. At that point, you'll be able to ask questions, but please do not interrupt during the presentation. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Jeff Tunkel. I'm a member of the task force, and what we wanted to do is, is kind of step back a minute, fill everybody in in where the, the task force came from, why we're even looking at this, and where the, the need came from in the community. So, move forward next. The task force was formed with a very specific mission, which was to look at the needs of the community that aren't currently being met, any currently unmet needs in the community, and how they could be better met. That was the scope of what we had. It wasn't to go beyond, beyond that, it was just simply looking at the needs. Can you hit the next one? So I'm gonna start with a little bit of, of, of history and where these needs came from and how they got identified. If you could go to the next slide, please? This is where the music was supposed to come. Okay.
Oh, that, is that where the Perry Como?
That was the Perry Como that was started. So, I don't know, 1894, the, the town was incorporated, encompassing primarily two counties, Carroll and Frederick, right? Set up in a kind of a unique dynamic for the town. In 1910, a central high school, Mountain Area High School, was opened, which served both Carroll and... Um, in nineteen ten, a central high school, Mount Airy High School, was opened, which served both Carroll and Frederick students. Yes, they actually all went to school together at that time. So this is what the school looked like, you may remember it's now Mount Airy Elementary, but in around the forties, this is approximately what that facility looked like. Around that same time, in nineteen forty-five, the Lions Club did a town survey, and the number one need, it was called a rec center at the time, but was for a rec center, it was far back, it's nineteen forty-five. What happened after that? Well, here's some of the things that were going on in nineteen forty-five.
Franklin Roosevelt was president, not Theodore.
Teddy. Franklin, you're right, Franklin was, I apologize. Uh, gasoline gas was only fifteen cents, the average cost of a home, forty-six hundred dollars. Times have definitely changed, and the number one song, which, um, I apologize, you should have been hearing it this time, was Perry Como, thought we'd have a little fun with that. All right, uh, in nineteen sixty-two though, Frederick County opened Lingor High School. That was followed just a few years later, nineteen sixty-seven, by Carroll County opening South Carroll, and that same year, uh, against the protests of Mount Airy citizens, Carroll County closed the Mount Airy High School. Ever since that time, Mount Airy lost what was a unifying institution in this town that brought together people from both counties. They could, knew each other prior to that, uh, there were events held in town that were across county. So, there was, there was a little bit of, something was lost, something that was a heart of the community. And at that time, even though twenty years had passed, no rec center had been built to replace that. So where do we find ourselves today, in the two thousands, it's still the number one desire of the citizens to have a community center, something to help bridge the gap between the counties, to fill needs that aren't being met here. Go to the next one. So, how do we know that this is still a relevant need? Well, most recently, in the last several years, there were two separate studies done, one commissioned by the town, it was an open-ended study, simply asked, what are the needs, what do you think is desired in this community, what are the things that aren't being met? Hundreds and hundreds of ideas came back, forty-four percent of the town responded. And overwhelmingly, needs for recreational opportunities came up in one form or another. In two thousand twelve, a more focused study was done. Uh, two groups, the, uh, the local Mount Airy group and the Kiwanis partnered together, and started off simply with twenty focus groups asking the question, what would you like to see in the town? Five key things were identified, number one was a community center. So those focus groups were then followed up by an online survey, with about ten percent of the town responding, which was actually also a very, very large percentage for any type of survey, and ninety percent of adults, ninety-three percent of the youth said, yes, we should have a community center. The other thing that that online survey allowed the, the group to do, is get some very detailed ideas about what did that mean to people, what kind of programming, what type of facilities, what was important within that community center, really drill down on that need. So after that was presented, uh, to the town in two thousand twelve, a group of concerned citizens formed a, an action committee and began digging into it. Um, that action committee was, again, the local and Kiwanis took part of that, but also members of the Parks and Recreation, and volunteers who had been running a teen center in Mount Airy for several years, joined that group of concerned citizens to dig into this need further. They met with, um, community centers around the state, went and visited and toured, found out what their facilities were, how they were run, what kind of funding they had, what programs they were offered, who was using them. Brought in experts at building and running community center to talk about what is the process, and they also met with, uh, local professionals in the building trade to help analyze various opportunities and what cost would be for different locations around town. Around the same time, the town began the update of its master plan. That master plan, which has since been adopted by the town, included as part of it, a community center. So in two thousand thirteen, the task force of which I'm representing was formed, and we began by looking at all these data points. The, the survey that was done in nineteen forty-five, the survey that was done in two thousand, in two thousand and tw- uh, two thousand eight and two thousand and twelve, the findings of that action group, and started categorizing and looking at, okay, what are all these different needs that were met? And are they available, you know, what, what opportunities are here in and around the community? Where are people going for these things now if they're needs? And are, is it here, is it local, is it out of town? What are the restrictions on the use of those facilities, what do they cost, who's able to use them? How available are they, are they overcrowded? All those were looked into. And we came up with a vision statement for what a community center in Mount Airy would need to be in order to satisfy those unmet needs that were identified in all those ways. Not going to read off and see all this, but the main points were, they wanted a offerings that were going to bring people together in community, um, and that would allow them to do things in town and not have to travel so far. Any of you who have kids in any of the sports programs know how far you often have to travel to find a field. You know, whether or not you signed up for a travel team, inevitably you're, you're on one. The, uh, other main thing was to enhance a quality life, and by that meant, I mean, well-being, that had to do with some of the programming that they would like to see. The other thing was to build on some of the strengths of, that the town had, you know, it was already a close-knit community, but just really didn't have a place to continually express that. And a little bit about what this facility should look like, um, that it should fit in with the character of our town, that it should be near the downtown, near walking paths, be something that would be a, um, a draw, you know, an anchor to the town. Just kind of summarize our findings, I'm going to actually turn over to Phil Busch to take you through some of what the, the needs were of the facility.
We thought it's just, we thought it's very significant that the call for a community center was first heard in this community back in nineteen forty-five. We thought it was also significant, uh, as Jeff has pointed out, that when we lost our high schools, our local high schools, okay, about that time, we started, and we lost that unifying force, that schools mean to us, okay? That's when we again started to see the, the repeat request for that kind of facility to serve in that kind of capacity for our community. When we visited community centers out in Howard County and over in Baltimore County, we physically saw some of the, the components of a center, okay? So, speaking to what those components are, and you can put them in different sizes, okay? But typically, there's a large meeting space, at a, at a minimum of a thousand to two thousand square feet. That's fairly flexible, okay? It can be used for meetings that are too big, in our case, uh, for this, this space, as an example, uh, our spillover meetings. We don't have a facility in town, other than a couple that obviously come to mind, we all know of, for large parties that can be rented, or large gatherings. We don't have anything that can be used for a wedding reception, as an example, and that has been mentioned on more than one occasion. Fiscal activity could be another use. We saw fairly nondescript, large, open spaces that were used for all of these. The sky was the limit in terms of how it was creatively applied. We saw a combination of that large meeting space with smaller meeting spaces, the number depended upon the size of the facility, but when those small meeting rooms and classrooms were there, typically three to eight hundred square feet, so you see the step down from the larger space, could be used for smaller parties, smaller groups, could be used for classrooms, could be used for overflow, for civic groups and meetings that, that a town hall such as ours is too small to accommodate, okay? And given the proximity to town hall, it makes even more sense. And then inevitably, if we saw a combination of a community center and a rec center, and some of what we saw had that capability, some were more community centers, some were more rec centers, then you had more, obviously, literal physical space, and that could give you one or more gymnasiums, uh, for basketball, volleyball, um, that too could be larger meeting areas, okay? Finally, we saw something that made a lot of sense, and that was one or more kitchen ads or food prep areas, okay? Depending upon the meetings, depending upon the groups that were going to be there, all right, you could serve food. Some of them even had small, uh, commercial-type kitchens. The community centers we visited in Howard County had that capability. A little bit more upscale, but again, it gave you more functionality, all right? So it's an area for storing food, uh, for prepping it, maybe our caterer brings it in and serves out of there. Typically, there was one, the more flexible dining spaces next to it that could be opened up and used adjacent to it, made all the sense in the world. You don't have to have a commercial kitchen, we're just saying this basic capability of having someplace to serve out of makes a lot of sense, if you're going to have some of these other components. And then finally, this is something we noticed in almost every single one of the community centers are areas that had a space for teens, it's simply a chill-out zone, calling it lounge, if you will. Typically, it's couches, it's comfortable oversized chairs to just hang out and just chat and just connect. When you ask them what they really, really want, that's number one. It's a space of their own and just to hang out. And those that remember going down in the basement of town hall, the things that they said they liked the best were those opportunities just to chill out, just to hang out, okay? So, all of that in combination are some of the physical components. We think it makes sense to look at potential locations, to utilize the town engineer and get some, some costing estimates, okay? This is something the community and our residents have been asking for, for a long time. It goes back to when this community had less than two thousand population. We're close to five times that size now. Many communities, even smaller than we are now, have had a community center for some time. It's part of the reason why our residents continue to ask for it. We need to look at how we could do it. It is a facility, is, is an opportunity for a meeting space and a connecting space that we don't have. It would enhance our community, okay? We ask your support to take the next step. Let's take a look at that, let's, let's see what it would take, all right? Barney, in terms of timing, um, how long would it take to, to pull some of your projections together to give us a sense of what costing might look like?
Since we do have quite a few projects to do, uh, we did say we could do this, uh, but we didn't want to have plenty of time, we're thinking the summer timeframe. Nail down exactly, I think June was being threatened.
I have a few words about this, but June first will be the date.
So our request, uh, of the council is that let's take this next step, let's see what those projections look like, uh, let's take another, uh, look at economic impact, look at a little bit more detail of what the benefit could be to the town. We think this is something that clearly would be an enhancement for Mount Airy. We ask you to.
So if there are any questions now?
Well, I guess the, I'll start, so the first, I want to thank you for the effort that you've put into doing this. It's a lot of information, you can tell that a lot of the groundwork has been done, um, so I think it's definitely going in the right direction, and it sounds like there's been a lot of progress from nineteen forty-five of just talking about, let's have a community center, to what needs to be in that community center. And, uh, so I want to thank you guys because sometimes that goes unrecognized. One of the questions I would ask though, have you looked at the infrastructure in Howard County? How were they paying for it? What type of support staff did they have? Was it town-based, was it private funding, et cetera?
So, I'm sorry, could, just.
We went out, I went out on the tours. They're, they're Howard County government, taxpayer-funded, and people pay for use as well.
But just to level set where we are, just, sorry, the, the purpose of the budget amendment, presentation reminds us where we are, that the purpose of the, the budget amendment, the reduction first of all is because we could do some of the work in-house. The purpose right now, the next step is to get a rough order of magnitude cost for what facilities may cost the town. At that point, the next step is the discussions on how would you fund it, what it would cost to operate, in other words, what I'm saying is, we've got to move forward, and in order to move forward, we've got to have, first of all, a rough idea of what certain size facilities would cost, then we start asking the next logical question.
Get you those answers.
So, then you get those answers, so I just, because if we, because we have to move forward and we have to do it incrementally.
Right, and I understand that, but, again, I was just asking the question, did you look at it?
Well, there's, there's, there's several various models, there're everything from like large developments, like Villages of Urbana and Spring Ridge, which build a clubhouse, which is very small, so they, they have one management style versus if we start expanding, so there's really without, we, there are small, medium, and large scales that will, um, then that discussion of feasibility and, um, funding and how you would go about building the various ones and operate it. Um, the one in Brunswick and Newmarket, they're just a Grange Hall, um, it's just a space, open space, and there's, there's really no management to pick up a key.
Right.
Um, so it's, at this time, I think it's just premature, we don't really know.
But that will be part of the study.
Yes, and we will address it.
That will be part of what Barney is optimistically going to do.
We don't want to waste the council's time with a lot of preliminary, um.
I was just asking in general, did you end up looking at it and the answer was yes?
We have taken on in models, and I think that could become part of the follow-on.
Okay, perfect, thank you for answering that.
Yeah, Scott, I, I don't want to downplay the question, because those are critical questions, but.
I wasn't asking for him to solve it, I was just asking.
Did you look at it?
That's actually step three, that's step three.
Right, I'm not downplaying it, I just want to just make sure that, because we keep talking and talking and talking.
Right.
And the frustration is, we're not moving, I just want to make sure that we move forward, and, and that's.
Well, I think we're all here to move forward.
Well, I guess we've, we've got a motion on the table.
A lot of discussion.
So, that's what we're working through discussion.
I still have discussion before we go to the audience. Recognize me?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we have just, we're open for discussion, there's a motion on the table, so if you want to, go ahead, yeah.
I want to make sure.
I was waiting for you to beat me with the stick, I was like.
That's just to get your attention, you know, I'm interested to speak, it's my big pencil. A very, very good presentation, by the way, blew me away, very good presentation, nineteen forty-five Lions survey, I did not know that.
They called, it was all done via phone, it's in the blue, the council.
That, that blew me away.
They only had four numbers.
That blew me away, I was going to say, there was enough numbers to call before we fired that, surprised me.
The fact that you brought up the unifying factor, it's something that we've been kind of losing, yet we're a split town, uh, like no other town in the state, uh, we're split. Another important thing that I don't think was brought up, we want to add it to future presentations, uh, it will give us control, because there's certainly other, you can go up to the school, but come summertime, you can't use the school basketball court anymore, you can't do this, you can't do that. We're, we have been at everybody's mercy in the town of Mount Airy to other people, we've been beholding to them. It's time the community of this size has some control over their own rec. We haven't had that, so I would add that to the future slide. Uh, you're so dead on about the teen center, I actually carried furniture in for the teen center every night for a year, and I hosted one down here for a year. All they want's a place to hang out with some couches. We did it for free, we maximized what we had, we've exceeded that, it's, it's, it's time to move forward. As far as the town doing the study, uh, it was Councilman Average's idea, uh, to save the town money. I'm not a huge fan, I, we've spent this type of money for other studies, for Wendy Ridge Park, this is not uncommon, fifty thousand is what an engineering study top would cost, we probably wouldn't spend that much. Uh, I think we're taking a very conservative approach, just going with a five thousand dollars, I think it's for an economic impact study, which, uh, but, so I'm cautiously optimistic, I had long conversations with Barney and Councilman Average, because I'm not a fan of this, however, I do not underestimate our staff. He feels he can do it, it won't be quite as good as a project, I think, if we farmed it out, and I will be watching the other projects very closely, because we still have a town to run, but if you feel you can do it, I support you, and I'm, I'll support this effort, hopefully it'll go well. We got to, look, we're missing opportunities, right now, there's really nothing on the table, we're going to do the study with staff, so there's nothing for the council to approve beside the five thousand, so you're off the hook as far as that goes, the study's going forward. But I want the town citizens to know, we're missing opportunities. We've been approached by several different private industry groups, and you talk about ongoing funding, that is number three on the staff, we're missing opportunities, one is one away, okay? I want to stop missing opportunities, it's been sixty-something years. So I hope you approve the five thousand dollars, thank you.
Ken, Scott, Bob?
No.
Can you guys go back two slides?
Do you want to hear the music?
No, I don't need the, I don't need the.
I couldn't get it to play on mine either.
Go, go back, well, we, I don't think, I don't think we have an audio hookup here anywhere.
Go, go back, I, well, we, I don't think, I don't think we have an audio hookup here anywhere, we're, we're video only, okay? Yeah, that's, no, that's good, that's good. I am not, you know, I'm not one who, um, as, as I think, I think Larry and Mary brought out, I, I'm not one who ran on getting a community center in town. Uh, I have always run on lower taxes and smaller government. Um, and I honestly, I, I look at this, and I see, most of this, I think, frankly, we have elsewhere. Um, if you look at this large meeting space, a thousand square feet, that kind of stuff, I think, Bruce, what's, what's the carnival grounds? That's probably at least a thousand, two thousand square feet.
I don't know what the square footage is, but it, it does concern me, because I hope you don't have competition.
Correct, and, and I know one of the reasons we, we supported the, uh, the fire company getting their zoning upgraded is because you want to actually enlarge and redo that building.
Actually, I'm meeting with an architect up there on Friday.
Correct. So I, you know, so I, I see, you know, that, that's already available, you can rent that, you wanna have weddings there, you wanna do that, okay? Small meetings and classroom space, you know, we have some of that here, we have the library, we've got the senior center. Um, you know, and, and actually, the, the carnival, the carnival grounds, I know, has a full kitchen. That being said, okay, um, the town does have a problem. I'm gonna put this up, so, I'm gonna use the whiteboard behind you guys. That being said, the town has a problem that we have to deal with. We didn't think about using both of these at the same time, we put this in. What is this, Katie? Where'd the eraser go?
That was done with a Sharpie, Peter.
It, it indicates we're putting the community center in a tunnel, I think. And Barney's gonna dig.
I know, I know what that was for, rails to trails, it was digging a hole for rails to trails.
That's okay, I'll, I'll, I'll. Okay, I'll, I've got a long enough. Let's assume this is Main Street right here, alright? Main Street comes like this, and it hooks up like this. And right here, at this corner, we have a building, is actually shaped like this, let's take a look at it. That we call the Flatiron Building, this is Center Street, Center Street, Main Street, the Flatiron Building. That's our problem.
Park Avenue, but.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, park.
Park Avenue.
Thank you, you're right, Centersdale, thank you very much. This is Park. That being said, we have a problem. It's this building right here, okay? We've, we've got to do something with this building, no matter what happens, okay? No matter what we, whether we want a community center, whether we want anything, we gotta do something with this building. It's gonna fall into the street, alright? It was interesting last month, watching this meeting, 'cause I was not able to be here, so I got to watch it on video. And it was kind of interesting, got a different perspective, and I heard, heard Pete Bowles in here talking about saving this building. Really can't, alright? If you take a look at the size of this building as it is here, standing here right now, and you add an elevator, you add bathrooms on all the floors, there's no room for anything else, okay? There just isn't, it just does not work, alright? None of the point, what, what I'm gonna suggest we do, and I'm sure, you know, I know engineers can sort this out, is that we basically just keep this outer wall structure, okay? Basically, keep this, just a facade on this side. And since we have to do something here, we might as well make this building useful, alright? We go with a plan, basically keep just this one facade facing this way, we go with one of the plans, it closes off park. And we build a community center slash Flatiron Building on that corner, and basically maintain the facade on that side, alright? We're basically retaining two walls, maybe, maybe a little bit of the third one. We have to do that, okay? I mean, we, it's not, you know, whether you want a community center or not, we gotta fix the building. And I'm looking at this going, alright, we can do both here, okay? We've gotta do one, we might as well do one well, rather than doing this small poorly. So I really think one of the things the council needs to do is maybe give the community center people a little more focus. And I think this should be our focus, okay? Let's not, you know, let's, let's take the idea of, oh, it can be here, there, 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 maybe off the table. And maybe just say to them, what can you build, given the amount of space and the amount of parking and everything else, to sort this out? What can you do there, kinda narrow their focus? Chris?
Right, so Peter, that's the medium, the medium plan, so to speak?
Well, the medium plan was actually destroying the building completely.
No, no, we're talking about, this is the community center.
Right, right.
The medium, the medium plan was, right, the medium plan was to, not to, the Cadillac plan, the, the very large plan was to close off park. Barney, correct me if I'm wrong, but the medium plan was to repair the building and move it, move, gain the extra space to where the parking's, where the troopers.
Six thousand square feet, is that correct?
Yeah, where the, where the, where the troopers, and that was, that was the, the, the medium plan, it didn't have the retail features of it, it was.
How mu, how many million? Off the top of your head?
That was just one of the.
The medium size was about a million.
But I don't think that, did that retain the outer walls? They put, they were gonna put up a whole new.
It was a whole new structure.
It was a whole new structure, they were gonna gut it, and I'm saying, let's spend the extra dollars and keep, keep that, okay? Not build something that looks like it, keep it. This is actually the third building.
They do it DC all the time.
This is actually the third building of this shape at, at this corner. This one, probably nineteen fifteen, between nineteen twenty, was when this one was built. There was a brick one before that, which we've seen a lot of the pictures, and there was a wooden one before that.
Oh, that's big, you can touch it.
They burned, fallen down, but this is still an old building. So I would basically like to keep that, keep the wall going around the side, and build the center there, mainly 'cause, you know, I'm, I'm not a big community center guy, but we gotta do this, okay? We've gotta fix the building, we might as well fix it usable. Scott?
And, I mean, tagging on to what Peter's saying, as far as the space, if it makes it better for the community center to focus on this, you're killing two birds with one stone, essentially. We're getting a community center, you're getting space out of it, we're saving a building that is very significant to the town.
I definitely could get behind that. I definitely could get behind the fact that it's gonna cost more than five thousand dollars focusing on this individual building. Um, and would be, uh, in line with saying that I would approve more money to do that. Based on the fact that we're approving a building, we've seen the plan before. I mean, this is stuff that's not new to us, we've seen this come forward, so.
But those plans didn't really were demolishing the old building and building a new structure.
Right, and I, I think that we need to keep the facade to, which is always something that has been talked about for the look. The inside of the building can change, the structure of the building can be brought up to code, the foundation can be repaired. We've done all that labor work, or groundwork too, with regards to how to fix the building, we just haven't done it. And so I think, we should do that.
And, and I, you and I, you and I haven't talked about this, we agree a lot on, on this, okay? But if you do this, you have many other projects that, that are, it's, it's incumbent to get Center Street open up so you can get people down into downtown, okay? So there, there are other projects that will, that will have to happen to complement this, or, you know, really gonna have a mess.
Right.
So, can I suggest, alright, since there's a motion on the table? If, so first of all, look to the community center task force as well as the council. The consensus is moving towards, I think, where a lot of us thought we were moving. I mean, Larry and Mary Hushour kinda kicked it off in the first with, what are you gonna do with the building to begin with? So, I, I think where we're going from a consensus standpoint, and honestly, community center task force first, is, I'll, what, 'cause I like doing it, pull my motion off the table for the five K.
If the council's consensus is to have, to redirect or emphasize to the community center task force, assuming we go with the medium plan, which we're, I think we're suggesting, is the commu.
Well, not even, uh, not even necessarily the medium plan, whatever point, you know, they can go bigger. I want, I mean, I, I'm not saying pull the five thousand, I'm, I'm really saying, give them the five thousand, but, you know, try and focus a little more on, on that project.
I, I would agree with the focus more, I don't think we ought to exclude options.
Okay, so, we've never excluded that as one of the options.
Oh, no, that's a definite option, we can see there's a sense of preference.
When we identify the needs from the data, and yes, there are, we, we did, we did a five mile, a ten mile, fifteen mile, and thirty mile radius of things that might be duplicated, we looked into the cost, the availability, and based on the surveys, sometimes the cost, I mean, you're right, some of these things are offered in town, but not at a rate that our citizens feel is, 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 not, like, acceptable, but they just can't afford them to participate.
Well, we lack the control.
And I think that's exactly what.
So, so also we're asking for is to keep an open mind, that if it comes back after looking at these things, um, that we're not shut down from opportunities, 'cause even if we're looking at expand, fixing the Flatiron, which it will happen, or, if we put, oh, something in there, there's issues of ongoing management, which we will find out as we pursue longer. We might build it, own it, and then we can't manage it, but we're shutting out outside partnerships, because it won't fit a need for them. Um, so, like, well, sorry, Bob.
That's okay, go ahead.
Um, what we did, how we kind of thought, like, the small, how we kind of not moved away from the Flatiron, but realized it might not be a viable option, is, the largest scale of the Flatiron would give us thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. Once you put back in the police force and the museum, three levels of ADA compliance, bathrooms, elevators, this is not even with hallways, entryways, and, um, storage, you would, that available space, we might be looking at a possible fifty-five hundred square feet. Once you take it back from there. So that's why we're saying, it might be, from based on what the town needs are, but just fixing the Flatiron and saying, here we gave you a community center without regard to what the citizens have asked for, isn't really listening. Our job is to listen and to sort out.
I've interrupted too many times.
Bob, Bob?
Um, and you might, you might take a look at, at another location, um, and I'm just throwing this out there, the, the cold storage property, for the same amount of money, you might be able to get three times what you can get as the Flatiron Building, with the engineering problems you're gonna have with it.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to do this anyways.
Right, we're.
So, we're spending this money either way.
Right, and, and I mean, the first option was, you repair what's there, and you really don't know how long it's gonna stand. The, the second option was, you take that down and you rebuild it.
Same size, all new.
Same size, you know, and, and you, you end up with, you know, hallways and bathrooms, that everybody can fit in.
Well, you can't, you can't fit anything in that same size and put an elevator in there for any.
But that's still one of the options on the table.
But that, but that was one of the options, but I'm, I'm just saying, you might, for the same amount of money that you're talking about investing in this, you might be able to get two or three times the building in another location, and that's what I think they need to look at.
Right, so, alright, so let me go back to where I started. The next step, which is, we're, first of all, the discussion's great, right? Is the purpose.
Right, I'm, I'm saying yes to the five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, no, but let me, you're right, the, the discussion's great, that's why we're here. Um, but I'll go back to where I started, we're trying to move the ball ahead just a little bit. So where we are right now, again, is rough order magnitude costing for some several sizes of facilities. And then, clearly, I think the community center task force is, or the council is very interested in, there's a message being sent from the council that clearly says, look, we gotta do something with Flatiron, we need to consider that as well from a community center task force. Because it, when a large building, let, let's just say, town staff produces a report, says, okay, a large facility, do all these things, is fifty million dollars. Well, of course, we know that's off the table, we're not gonna do it, but we looked at it, we know we're not gonna do it. A small one is, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, but we can do nothing with it. Well, the community center, we could do this, but with a little bit, whatever, that's the point of the next step. So, alright, so we'll leave the five on, and I, I kinda think the community center task force sort of knows which way to go, maybe?
Uh, I, I agree with what she just said, uh, wholeheartedly. I don't think you could, senior, uh, community center where a Flatiron Building is, I don't think you got room there to do justice to a community center. I just don't see that, my vision, uh, I agree with you wholeheartedly. If you're gonna build a community center, do it right when you do it, don't build something small there just, just to have a room.
And there's the, the key point, Ken, the next step gets us cost figures as to what it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the next step gets us some example cost figures of what it would cost to do it right, whatever right may be.
Yeah, and we see the emphasis, so I think we're all there, we're all there for doing something with Flatiron Building anyway, but if we, but if we can put them both together, it's a better plan.
I think the short of it is, I think we all support the five thousand.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna do that, that's fine.
I, I think just the consideration, it kinda goes back to the whole infrastructure part too, is talking to people about running these facilities. They should have some type of numbers, regardless of where you put the facility, whether we're building a new building, we have an existing building, whatever, there is a cost associated with running it. We should be able to get a rough order magnitude of what those costs are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we are.
At which point, you can say, here's a fuzzy number, plus or minus.
We already know those, and we even know some options.
Part, part of the economic model, it does come for what types of, uh, programming, and you can fit in that facility, because different types of, um, options generate different types of revenue. So some of them are, you know.
But Jeff, can I be, one, this is, because it's Bruce's point, it's Peter's point, I know it's my point. If we start talking about rental space for large parties, it, to me, I'm sorry, that's off the table, because now we're gonna compete with local businesses, and we can't use, my position is.
What's about actual activity in the program?
Oh, understood, but, but the interpretation of what was up there, you know, is a kitchen, rental space for large parties, and the interpretation, at least from my got, I know Peter got it, Bob has it as well, all, it's, it's Scott, Ken. The interpretation we got was, okay, well, here's the, maybe here's something we'll do to rent space for large parties, generating revenue. I'm sorry, just hear me out. It, no way, shape, or form can we compete with local businesses or the fire department?
That was just an example of what the space could be used for. I'll tell you number one thing, when we were in discussions with the YMCA and other, they wanna know about being able to run summer camp programs. You would need a large space to run summer camp programs.
And that's a perfect use.
I'm just saying, the part, those are all just, we were just listing out broad term of things that would, and, and met the, the needs asked for by the community very specifically, as well as what type of activities we could be putting in these spaces.
Not that we need to get into the weeds as far as that type of management, but just to throw a little something out there. Uh, if you're gonna look at private industry step in, which should be an option to save the taxpayers money, there may be an element where they have to make a profit, as long as it's not direct competition, there shouldn't be a problem. We wouldn't have books, we wouldn't have libraries out there, 'cause they put all the bookstores out of business, right? We wouldn't have a, a fair down on Main Street, 'cause they put all the other businesses out of, out of business. So there's, there's points and times, uh, and it's all about our control too, that's something we're really lacking. Bob was chair of mayor for three hundred years, I don't know how many years you had there, a long time. But in any, in any way, the whole issue was control. You know, I love the fire department, or these other places, we need town control, we need some more control. And we may have to give up some of that control in order to get a private industry investment, but don't take everything off the table that you're afraid we're gonna compete a little. That's all I'm just saying, be careful.
And another thing everybody should understand right from the start, and, and we did with the skate park, but the skate park became very evident, this is not a money-making proposition, you are never gonna, you're never gonna break even, okay? You're, you're, you're not going to, okay? And it's not intended to, our parks are not intended to, to generate, you know, millions of dollars of income so that we can live fat and happy. It's not gonna happen.
But they do increase your quality of life, and potentially have an impact on your property values.
You'll get a percentage of what it costs you taken care of, but you're never going, this, this is not a, this is not a profit thing, this is a quality of life thing, okay? And I, I really can't emphasize that enough, and, you know, we, we had a guy with the skate park that taught the skate park for years and years and years, and ought to generate a profit. It's not a profit generating thing, it's for your citizens, and it improves their quality of life. And that's all I got to say.
I think we had a couple citizen comments, I saw Rick, and did you have? Anybody else, okay, just Rick, anybody else? If you wanna, go stand up next to him. Rick?
They can't, they can't hear. They can't hear you at home if you don't talk.
Yeah, you'll have to come up.
Hey, Rick Blatchford in Nottingham, I had a laundry list of things I was going to talk about, and it sounds like the discussion's going in the direction it should. I simply would like to put an exclamation point on something that Mr. Swanson said last month. So a lot of discussion, it seems like the assumption is that the community center is a foregone conclusion. I'm wondering why there's no discussion of what is the priorities, which is what Mr. Swanson mentioned last month. We need to prioritize our projects, we've got a Center Street project, we've got the Flatiron Building, we've got a community center. I got an email this afternoon that's talking about the police force again. You people need to sit down and say, come to an agreement. What's number one, what's number two, what's number three? That's how we'll get it done, and we'll get the most important things done first, but you guys have to prioritize. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Eric.
You're up.
I'm up again.
You show up at meetings, that's what happens.
I originally came to talk about the street, but I'll also have, I have some concerns too.
Get the introductions.
Okay, alright, okay, I'm Carl Wonder again, two thousand two, Fillmore, Cleveland, Sterling Land. My biggest concern is, it seems like the council has discussed a lot of the competing competitions with private business in the area. Mount Airy's always been, it's like, bring business, bring business, we need more business. Businesses will probably not locate to this town if you have a community center that offers summer camp, even because mainly potential for government subsidies to the program can make it cheaper. And that will hurt private business generally. Also, it's like everything, large scale. Also, it's like everything, large scale, everything seems all grander, but, let's say, the fire department, I guess you want the fire department, young, you know, it will affect their business. Anything, nobody will come to the town, and if you have a government building to offer parties, dinners, everything else, community center, I can agree with, it probably needs meeting space and some town control, but do not put the business aspect into it. Keep it community-related. Basketball courts, maybe some arts and crafts, maybe some acting places, that type of stuff. But anything that competes with private business, government should not be involved with. The state government has stopped offering bus trips to the Ravens game, because it's a state ballack saying, they cannot compete with private business. The town should be the same way. They should not directly compete with private business. Also, the long-term costs will probably bankrupt the town. Mainly due to the fact that there's some, I remember a story sometime in Colorado, from this fancy community center when the times were good. Ten years later, five years later, town's bankrupt, mainly related to the community center. So, let's not do that in that area. Okay, I know a community center's good, people might be teens, there are other opportunities in this town. As you said, going to school, you, you have the school, going somewhere, you have the senior center, a library for people to meet. Outside the park, let's get the kids to meet at the parks, hang out down at the parks and stuff, try the areas before we start spending millions of dollars to do a, to do a community center that has a potential chance of taking business away from local businesses. Also, as the gentleman said, Rick, I believe, said prioritize. Community center would be nice, but it should be at the bottom of the list. There's streets to bring in business, bring in development, keep it a tax base low, all, all that. So, I'm not saying it's, it's low, I'm not saying it's not important, but they need to prioritize too. I'm sure I'm re-reading stuff that's been said a lot.
Yeah, you are, you are, but I just wanna say something, it's, it's never gonna be on the bottom of the list.
On the bottom of the list is a lot.
It's gonna be number one on the list, as far as I'm concerned, it's number one in the surveys.
But the surveys, bring up the surveys, why can't pick up, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a bad survey.
They are online, they're-
Yeah, they're, they're, they're online.
I know, but it's, I mean, the twenty twelve, you have nine hundred, out of ten, ten thousand, nine percent.
Pardon me?
How many people responded?
Sir, we had a forty-four percent success rate, that's unheard of for a survey, forty-four percent.
That's, that was two thousand and eight.
That's two thousand and eight, yeah, that was, that was unheard of.
National, um, survey companies, um, you can associate-
It was a very good percentage.
They put us a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the value of the survey that we had. And if they, no, I know, but they would, they would expect a six percent yield, we got ten percent. That's all, that's what, I'm just-
I know, I know, I know the survey, I know, but maybe there's, uh, maybe we focus, narrow the focus of the community center more towards community-related activities, as, as you say.
No, I heard you, I, I heard you, I heard you.
The bottom's a long term, but it, there are prioritizing projects that need to be done, and-
Got it.
I'm saying, like, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm not trying to-
I agree.
No, I, I heard you the first three times you said it.
Keeping this building from falling into the street is one of my high priorities. Because we know this building is, I mean, it's in, it's, it's not, it's got structural problems, it's gotta be done. That's a high on my list.
I just said, maybe refocus towards more community-related, like you said, unifying, a center that would unify the community more so than maybe potentially divide and take business away from private business.
Point, point, well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's okay, thanks, that's what we're here for.
One thing that's important is that everyone gets their opinion out. Uh, if competition becomes the, the topic of, uh, that, that starts making decisions here, then what I would tell you is that, right now, the Mount Airy Arts Alliance is renting a space, uh, to hold events in. Uh, it's more of an adult arts type of thing in terms of, uh-
What kind of, what kind of arts do you have down there, Eric?
I knew you were gonna go there. But, uh, in terms of open mics, uh, and in terms of putting on plays, which, by the way, there's gonna be a play next week, uh, that will be, uh, called Love Letters, that'll be performed down here, thirteenth and fourteenth, at what time?
What, what time? Stay with that.
With professional-
With professional actors.
Where can we get tickets?
These are the types of things that the Arts-
Stay on topic, please.
Alliance is bringing into the community, and it's not competing, it's not being satisfied right now, but it is drawing people in, and I know for a fact, the mayor has sat up there and sang a wonderful tune at an open mic night.
I played guitar and sang, and I can sing.
Did a wonderful job. So, uh, that's the, the type of thing that the arts, uh, group brings in, and that's something that's not being satisfied now. So, if you're gonna make priorities, then you may wanna look at that, because there's no one else satisfying it. But I also wanna remind you that the best chance of recouping money is through arts grants. And the Arts Alliance does have a grant writer in Ron Runkles, and he's already working on the caboose with us, and he's, uh, got a proven corporate record, so, thank you.
At some point.
Yeah. Tony?
Hello, Tony, Blood of Mount Airy. Um, I just wanna kind of echo what everybody's saying here. Big picture, as Pat said, this town wants a community center. Both surveys overwhelmingly, that was the number one thing they want. You guys need to keep that, keep riding the ball with that, okay? Rick's right, you have to prioritize. Now, I love the flatiron building as much as anybody in this town, but to me, that is an emotional decision you are making, okay? That serves no purpose than to make everybody feel good, okay? Whether you tear it down, rebuild it, make it look nice, paint it, doesn't matter. It's an emotional, financial move you're making, the flatiron building. To me, that's a priority only because it's falling apart, and that's the only reason.
Right.
That's a safety issue, that's not an emotional issue.
Hold on, the building's not falling, but let the man finish. I can see that, it's building, it's not crumbling. It's safe to walk the streets of Mount Airy.
Let it crumble and let nothing come there, and just take away all the bricks, do something, but whatever you spend there is an emotional decision, okay? The community center is also an emotional decision, but it's what the people want overwhelmingly. I think that should be a priority. Center Street, like Dick said, yeah, that's gotta open up, that needs businesses to come through to open it up.
That's right, we're not paying for that.
We can't just open the road up and say, okay, here it is, come do it. We're trying to work on the planning commission to make that easier to happen, okay? So, that's gonna come in its own due time, okay? As far as competing with businesses in town, you guys are completely illogical about that, okay? Because everybody, if I wanna rent out a space, I'm gonna look at the fire company, I'm gonna look at this place, that place, and who can offer me the best deals for my dollar, okay? And town has a hall I can rent, I'm gonna look at the town as well.
That's not the town's job, that's not government's job, Tony, I can-
But let me finish, let me finish. Right now, the arts people group here, okay? They're renting out space, they've used this space, they've not used the fire hall, have they? The fire company, they're using local space here. So, by you offering them this building, you're denying the fire company dollars, okay? You're competing with-
My apologies for letting you use the building.
They're operating here, okay? So, the whole logical path about not competing with businesses is kinda nonsense. So, I'm not really buying off on it. Anytime you do something in this town that improves it, one business may be hurt, another person's dying. The, uh, the OPE we're working on, if that thing opens up the way the county wants, we're gonna kill business in town, okay? So, that's something we all have to consider, burning business for another, that's government helping versus businesses. There's a lot of things going on here, but as far as competing with business, I don't think that's really what you should be focused on. You should be focused on what the people want, and what the people need.
And, and small business loans themselves compete with other businesses. When you make small business loans, you're competing with other businesses.
I've heard that this council, we gotta fix the flatiron building for the reasons understood, but I haven't heard, we've gotta build a community center, even though that's what the people want. And I haven't heard, we've gotta do this. I wanna hear, we gotta do it, we gotta figure out how we're gonna do it, how are we gonna fund it? Like Chris said, you gotta make it happen, there's ways to make it happen. And Pat said, my wife is from Oklahoma, okay? There's a town there called Claremore, it's about eighteen thousand people, back in, like, fifteen years ago, they needed a rec center, okay? Bigger town, they built an eighty thousand dollar, eighty thousand square foot facility, okay? It cost them like seven million dollars, it's a bigger scale project, they instituted a one penny sales tax, I know it's an evil word, one penny sales tax to totally fund that, and when it was built, the tax ended, it had its sunset, okay? The people voted that tax in, because it had a definite drop dead date, because they wanted that center. It's another avenue to help fund it or fund this building, but I think you guys need to kind of figure out how you're gonna make this happen, okay? And not get bogged down in the weeds, okay?
Yeah, it is the weeds, because there may not even be any competition, we may just put a hall in. That's what the study's gonna tell us, and what your decision you're gonna make at this table.
Remember, there's still a motion on the table.
Yeah, Amethyst, we're gonna close it off after you.
Yes, great, um, I just wanted to, um, during some of our research, the, uh, competition, uh, with local business versus partnerships with local businesses, we have three businesses in town who, right now, have to use the Frederick County Parks and Rec system to run programming, because they can't house it in their own facilities. There are businesses in town who would love to, and this is a sample in a lot of community centers, say, we wanna offer a dance. We would reach out to local businesses and allow them to operate it for us. There are partnership options, our own businesses are suffering from, like, the ability to grow, um, and just, and, and like you said, more in the recreational, or in the, uh, artistic, unmet needs, but it, it, some people, like, there's no opportunities for health and wellness classes, um, and some, these are some of the interesting things that have been asked for. We have, uh, the knitting chicks right now knit at Starbucks, um, they've moved out of their little facility. These are just examples in town where people are asking for meeting places, asking for a centralized community. It is hard as a member of this community to even know about a lot of the opportunities in this town. A lot of people on Facebook, whenever we talk, the Super Fresh building comes up, says, we need a movie theater. We put out there, we do free movies in the park during the summer. Um, it, there's a need to reach out, both as citizens, government, and businesses, and create a heart to our town, and as we move foot and forward, and once we get these things, there are a lot of different ways that different towns have brought this together that is not competition. It's actually a compliment, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thanks. Shall we bring the vote on this, gentlemen?
So, is, are we staying with Chris's pull-up motion?
Uh, is, is, is it still your original motion?
No, I did, I did obviously pull it off, I just asked, but I asked you not.
And, and I had seconded that motion, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none, okay.
Before she leaves.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Amethyst, the chairman of the, uh, of the teen center-
He's gonna beat you with a club.
Of the Community Center Task Force. She's actually here on her birthday, doing her presentation.
Oh.
She, she should be out to dinner with her husband. So, on behalf of the town and all your hard work, for coming in here on your hard work, we wanted you to have this.
Thanks, Amethyst. Okay. Ordinance two thousand fifteen two, budget amendment for the tennis courts, basketball court refurbishment. This needs to be done as an emergency ordinance, the reason is, is because we wanna pay the bill. This was a project that was supposed to finish in the last fiscal year, but because of various problems, it didn't get finished till now, and the bills now do, and Shirley wants to pay it, and, um, still gonna get done.
Point of clarification is, it's taking money from last year and moving into this year.
Yes, it's the same, I think, are we under, are we under?
I, I wanted him to clarify, it's not additional money.
It's just money was budgeted last year, that we're moving this budget year. So, I will move that we accept it, and accept it as an emergency measure.
Scott wins.
Scott's seconding it.
And, and not only, not only that, they did an outstanding job, the tennis courts and the basketball courts have never looked this good.
I'm always worried somebody's gonna dive into them, because it looks like a pool.
It does, the, the colors.
All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we had five, so that passed as an emergency measure. Budget amendment, trooper expense, caboose funding for introduction, I will so introduce, do I have a second on the introduction?
Um-
I saw Ken, Ken waits his hand first, so I'll give that one to him, and that will be on the agenda for next month.
That's only because he's been on vacation for the last week.
Moving on to unfinished business, Chris, strategic financial plan.
Yes. No PowerPoint slide presentation this time. Um, a cou- couple updates, um, interesting that a number of folks talked about prioritizing and things during the community center discussion. So, um, a number of things. I'm continuing to get input, dialogue from the community about different ideas, which is great. Um, last time when I briefed the council, there was the concept of putting an RFP on the street. The idea of the RFP was to look at hiring a consultant, um, a lot of controversy about that. The council didn't really seem that interested in doing that, so I dropped that idea. Along with dropping that idea, Dick Swanson, um, you know, was kind enough to provide, uh, the council some ideas about town reserves and how you might plan for it. So, you know, once again, um, if you ask questions in an open forum, a lot of times you get responses from the community, you get help from the community, and we save taxpayers money, so, um, so we have that list. Um, a couple comments and then some questions for the council. And the questions I have actually directly address some of the things we've heard tonight about prioritization. Note that we have a number of upcoming projects, right? We have the Route twenty-seven corridor study, which is gonna get released relatively soon. That study will come back and tell us about infrastructure, perhaps needs, costs along up and down Route twenty-seven. Community Center Task Force, we heard a lot about, Harrison LaShear is also starting to heat up. The idea of potentially annexing Harrison LaShear, acquiring a well, and eighty or so acres of recreation space. So, um, the question I have for the council are for tonight, and the idea of asking the council these questions are to help prioritize. So, just so you know, I had these list, listed questions before the meeting, but the prioritization question I have directly feeds into some of the comments we heard tonight. Um, first of all, does the town want to spend by consensus? Does the town wanna spend any more money going out and acquiring water sources? In, in other words, the question is this, if there's a well somewhere outside of town boundaries, do we want to spend money to go acquire that as a source of water? Because if we do-
Perhaps.
Yeah, Bob, Bob says a definite yes. We were hired by the people of Mount Airy to solve problems, okay? And if you're identifying water as a problem, then we have an obligation to solve it, okay? So, I'm, I'm a definite yes there.
Who's water is here? Oh, I just need a yes or no, and I'm gonna, you're a yes.
I, I, I'm a yes, depending upon circumstances, yeah.
I, I'd be a yes.
Uh, just got a question, I think it was brought up last month, it was twenty, 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 right?
Yeah.
Has, has, ain't that water been released?
Well, it's, we're releasing it increments, but the question here is, when we run out, and we will.
That's not my question now, my question now, has that water been released to anybody?
Um-
Sequoias.
It, it's in, it's out there for use, right?
So, why we need more water, we haven't even used what we got.
There's a backlog of people that want water.
Right, but I said, well, now, you, why hasn't that water been released?
Well, but-
No, there's a backlog, there's, there's people waiting in line for water.
Why hasn't it been released yet?
Because there's a line for it and the quantity that they get, so we can, we can talk more about this if you want offline.
It's, it's gonna be released, it's, it's-
It, it's all accounted for, for people that have signed up for it and the way they're releasing it.
By the planning commission under the ordinance.
Yeah, my question, Ken, is more strategic.
There's not really any money out there, I mean, any water out there, there's not really any extra water out there, it's all, somebody has it all reserved.
It's not enough for the projects that are-
That are, okay, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, the mayor, while he does have a vote, uh, by charter, is able to take part in the discussion, so I will take part in discussion. I'm probably gonna lean towards a no. There is no way that the citizens of Mount Airy, time's up. No way the citizens of Mount Airy should be funding water for other development, no matter if it's good commercial development, no matter what, no, let me finish. No matter what it is, the citizens of Mount Airy should not be funding it. Tax dollars should not go to fund water for a business to come into town. I'm sorry, I want those businesses, I'd love to find a way, but you gotta work with your water expiration fund, you have to let development pay for that water, so I'm, I would be more of a no on that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, let me, again, because I gotta, the, this is a quick, a, a quick canvas, because I'm trying to develop-
Can we strike that from the record, please?
This is a quick canvas.
I heard, yes, yes, yes.
I'm a definite no, for the exact same reasons.
Right, so you've heard three yeses so far.
Three yeses, ten.
And Ken, whatever Ken's decision's gonna be.
Are you for spending money in the future for more water or not?
I think it depends on the need, if you need it, but I don't know.
Yeah, I said, I said, perhaps.
That's good.
You know, personally, she, you know.
Good enough, it's a yes.
All right, next question.
Depending on circumstance.
Next question, Center, Center Street. Okay, so typically, when we do roads and development, things like Center Street, the developer pays for Center Street. Um, the developer pays for the new road, so again, similar question, because Center Street's been talked about as one of the priority projects.
So, you got two perhaps and two no's, just for that other question.
I, I have, I have a-
Three solid yeses.
No, two.
I, I have it, um, so, for Center Street, so typically, when we do, we talk about Center Street, if there's a road that has to be put in for economic, you know, for businesses to put, the business pays for it. So, let me start with, I'll start with Bob on this one, Center Street, do we fund it from public funds, or do we wait and let the developer build it?
If, if you can, and, and sometimes things are working at the same time that other things are working. So, um, there's a very good possibility that that's being discussed right now, and the taxpayer's not paying for it. If the taxpayers had to pay for it, I would think that would be one of your best investments right away. Um, Barney, we talked about this, would you say half a million, about a million to a million?
Closer to a billion.
Okay, so a million dollars, and you would get an almost instant return on your investment, because you would have a commercial entrance to your downtown, you could do what everybody's talking about doing with the, the flatiron building, You could do what everybody's talking about doing with the, the Flatiron Building, and you would have, but you would have a commercial entrance into downtown instead of a, instead of a residential entrance into downtown.
You hard yes, soft yes?
I'm a hard yes.
For using taxpayer money for Center Street.
For using, for using taxpayer money for Center Street.
Ken?
I think when you open Center Street, I think you're gonna create a lot of problems too, because you're gonna have a major intersection here, you're gonna have a major intersection on Route twenty seven. So you're gonna create some problems. Uh, it don't take the seventy thousand dollar survey to know that.
It's the only question about funding, not a question of.
Only question about funding, because I'm trying to prioritize.
It's gonna happen, it's gonna happen one way or another.
It don't take a survey, it don't take a survey to figure that out, then we're gonna have a major problem out there.
Understood, but would you favor taxpayer funding or not? No. Okay, Ken, Scott?
And so I just wanted to clarify, you are a hard yes?
A hard yes.
Hard yes, no.
Okay, so you're for it?
I'm, yes.
No, I'm just making sure, because it sounded like at first you were agreeing with him and he's a no. So I wanted to make sure I was hearing the answer correctly, which was a conflict.
That's politics.
I got it. Yes, no, okay.
Just try to prioritize, get an idea of the priorities.
It, I'm gonna say a soft yes because of the fact that it depends on the circumstances of what we're doing and what the need is and the cost to trade ratio.
And that's why this is so very hard.
I'm not gonna say it's a hard.
Peter?
We, we began, actually, the construction to do this almost twenty years ago, when we tore down the building on the corner there. We purchased the building on the corner, and we tore it down to start this project, and it's not gone through. This is the only project in my years that I've ever, and I've said it on the record before, that I would actually support an eminent domain proceeding to get that through. It needs to be done.
That sounds like a hard yes. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I'm gonna go with the no on that one.
Time's up, his time's up again. He gets absolutely too much.
Because, because private industry can do it. We also have a Center Street expansion, not a Center Street.
But we waited twenty years.
We also, I have the floor, we have a Center Street Development Fund that businesses pay into whenever they open up anything on Center Street. Let's utilize the mechanisms we have. We do not need to use taxpayers' money for that. We're talking about a million dollars to poke Center Street through, and we're and we're struggling over fifty thousand dollars to look at the number one concern of the community. No.
Chris, I'm assuming that we're gonna use all of whatever funds we have allocated to that first. Okay, you don't, I mean, you know what I mean? It's like the water allocation.
You're gonna have to supplement.
Are we gonna spend the taxpayer dollars underwater? Well, yeah, we're gonna spend our water allocation funds first and.
But we're assuming what you exhausted, though.
We're assuming you exhausted those.
It's a question table, we're gonna do it with the money. And just, now I forgot my phone.
The question, the question, the idea here again is.
There is development on the table for Center Street.
Right.
We heard it kinda earlier.
And that's first, I agree.
Is, is some ideas of priorities. I'm just trying to get.
You're doing the right thing.
He's working on his power.
And, and, and sorry, to finish the conversation.
Well, this is relevant to.
Go ahead, Scott.
Did you end up saying yours? I don't think I heard any of it.
I was trying to get it in.
No, no.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm a hard no.
Oh, he said the first one. He said.
Yeah, no, and so on the first one. I'm a hard no on water.
Your no.
Man, Chris are, man, Chris are tracking.
Thank you.
All right, great. All right, two more questions, then, that'll help me. Do we believe one day we're gonna need a local police force? Because if we do, we've gotta start to look at having money available to do that. Do we, do, and, you, I, you know, just an idea. Oh, wait, who, who gets, goes first this time?
I will, I will go with a, I will go with a hard no.
Wait, you went first last time.
Yeah, I don't mind getting first here.
Scott, I'll go first this time.
Well, he wants to, go ahead, somebody go first, because.
I'll, I'll go first this time because I started this whole thing a long time ago. I believe at some point that there's going to be a need to have some type of police force to augment services that we're currently either not getting or in a degraded capacity. So the answer to it is yes, we are going to need to put money towards it. We've already had a police task force that's gone through it and come out with a report of what we needed for a police force. It's all a matter of when do we pull the trigger to do it. The state police have constantly, not due to their own fault, increased their costs, and we've had diminished response time from them. That's been one of the complaints that we've had.
Right.
We've looked at, uh, county police or sheriffs and a hybrid thereof. We're gonna have to do something.
Just get my hard yes.
You're good. Oh, wait, uh, mix up, Peter?
I, I, I think I would say ditto what Scott said.
Okay, uh, Ken?
I would have to answer.
That would get Ken out of there. You can't fool me.
Talk to me, look me up.
He was trying to, he was trying to get me. That's a political thing again.
Okay. I think there's a happy lot of questions to answer before we even think about that. Number one be, if police department gets sued, the town's gonna get sued. That'd be a major concern, uh, one of the major concerns.
Yeah, we, we'll get sued anyway.
Not the state police do something.
We'll get sued.
I'm, I'm actually suing you all right now myself.
Are you?
For wasting time. But, 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 I mean, I did.
I mean, that'd be a big concern. I'm just talking, are you gonna get better curbs by having our own?
Ken, don't know. I just, the, 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 the basic question is, I'm trying to, again, for the, we heard tonight, I'm just trying to get an idea of where the council thinks our priorities are.
So maybe, maybe is a good question. He's a maybe, he's a maybe.
And I'm, and I'm a maybe too, because.
You got better service.
Okay, so that, that's the question.
How would you know that?
There would have to be a whole lot.
Maybe, maybe, yes, yes. Me? I'm, I'm a hard yes. I'm a hard yes. I'm not gonna give you all the reasons. We need to talk. I'm a hard yes.
All right, all right, those are, all right, so let me just summarize. Those are kind of the, as I was looking through the list of things I presented on priorities, I was looking through some of the list of things that Dick had presented in his, his spreadsheet he sent to the council. Those were kinda some of the priorities he had listed. And actually, Dick had his own priority list as well, but I just wanted to kinda get an idea from the council. Again, the, the idea of the strategic financial plan is to prioritize list of projects, assign numbers to them, and get together with the council, the community, and determine, A, how much do we leave in reserves? B, what projects are priorities? C, can we afford them without bankrupting the council? And I'll turn the floor back to Peter.
He had a. I saw the pen up first.
No, no, I'm getting the floor back.
I'm only gonna ask one question, and, and it's more or less a compliment to councilman average along the way, is that it sounds like we've worked out a way where we can make decisions without having to ask for money to figure out what those decisions are. So I applaud you in doing it. With that said, I didn't get the list of whatever the prioritizations were that were being thrown around.
His email's not working.
So if you can resend those, please, because I would like to see at least what we're talking about, uh, for next time. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, one big question wasn't asked. Where are you at on the community center? Didn't you wanna ask that?
I think we all just co- covered that one.
So, everybody's a yes?
I think we covered it, but, um, I, I really think that the idea of the community, this, the study that's coming starts to gives us, gives us a wrong number. Once the council focuses on, okay, here's how much we think we can afford, that goes in here.
Okay, I'm just saying that, that's also one of the topics that, if you're all are a yes, I'll tell you.
As with any of these things that Chris talked about, okay, how, whether you're for it or against it can be the scope of the, the size. The, um, you know, whether you think it's taxpayer money or not. If it was gonna take ten thousand dollars to put Center Street through, I wouldn't be for it.
You would be for it, wouldn't you?
I would not be for it. If it's gonna, I'm sorry, I've got to thank you.
I was gonna take that down, ten thousand.
Cross it off.
Sorry, I, I, I had a little, I had a little money. But if it was gonna be ten million dollars.
Then you wouldn't be for it.
I would not be for it.
I got you.
But, you know.
But, well, we, fortunately for that one, we had a number. It was one million. Great job, Chris.
Uh, no, but you know what? Actually, Pat, you're, sorry, I moved too quick, because I was trying to get past this part. Um, you bring up something I didn't ask. So, yeah, the community center, community center, in, in, in general, I am for the concept of a community center. Again, it depends on the amount of money, so I'll put me as a soft yes. Bob?
Am I, am I for spending five thousand dollars for a study? Yes.
That's a political answer.
That's a, that's.
He's been very political tonight.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm for, I'm, you know, you guys not for a, a community center, but there's also limitations on how much you're gonna spend.
Sure, it's a soft yes.
What the scope is.
There's a limitation on everything.
I'm a soft yes.
Soft yes. Scott?
Soft yes.
Ken?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to change the average. I'm a hard yes.
Again.
You're a hard what?
I just wanna change the average.
All right, so, so.
It's kinda like half fast.
It depends.
I've got, I've, I've got lots of information, lots of opinions, lots of help from lots of folks. Appreciate some of the discussion here that, again, the next step sorta is to try to prioritize and then see what we can and can't afford. So, um, you know, again, um, I didn't, I optimistically expected we could do this quickly, but, you know, as we learn more and more, we understand, you know, that, that, the, the journey here changes based on everybody's input, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Doc O'Brien had a quick comment. Yeah, just make it quick, because I don't wanna get too bogged down in this. Since we're not voting on anything.
Correct.
Mike O'Brien, eight oh six Park Avenue. I think you need in your priority list to make a distinction between infrastructure needs that will eventually be paid back and other priorities that may or may not get paid back monetarily in your decision-making process. And also, as a town, we need to provide infrastructure opportunities for any development that we want, knowing that we will recoup it when people come in and develop it. And if you don't, you, the typical example would be the paint property that we had, um, that gentleman come in and wanted to develop that, that shopping center back there, but because he would have had to provide the whole road infrastructure, he backed out. Everyone would. If we provide the infrastructure and pay as you go for the developers, we get our money paid back to us for our initial investment, which is what a government should be doing. The other parts of the wish list are, are wish lists that have, um, no, no cogent returns necessarily on our investment. We don't know what we're gonna get back on that as far as the monetary part. We know we'll get our infrastructure cost back eventually. That's my only point. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Doc. Thanks.
Okay, up next, uh, the council and mayor email policy. Uh, this is on here for me, and I think we had, we had punted to the mayor, you had wanted to look into it.
Yeah, a couple of comments on that. The town, you all have a spreadsheet in front of you. The staff did a great job looking at it. And just to summarize it, uh, they've listed here places that make it available. Uh, nobody mandates it. In fact, you may have some First Amendment issues. I'll defer to Tom on that. If you mandate, how we're gonna communicate, uh, many places, about fifty percent of them make it available, and I think we should make it available. It has to be mandatory for staff. The staff has to use town email. But for basically what amounts to volunteers at this table, to have them have to log into another system to check emails, and then when they get a PR, uh, public information request, they have to go to that email box, go to their private email box. Because I can tell you, after twelve years doing this business, people are still gonna send stuff to my Gmail. There's just no way around it. I'm gonna end up checking both of them.
It would take a long time to get rolled over, but I'm just saying we should start.
Well, whatever, whatever, whatever you're thinking of, I'd be careful, and this is just my advice to you. Uh, nobody else mandates it. Nobody else has it as a policy. About fifty percent of them, make it available. I think we should do that. I think we should make it available. Uh, be careful about, if you try to mandate it, you may run into some trouble with the state of Maryland and First Amendment.
I, I, one, one comment, and it, it's the, um, the PIA, the PIA, this would make that much easier. I'm, you know, I, neither, neither for or against. I mean, I, I like my, my email and, you know, having, having control and all that kinda stuff. But, you know, if the, if the town, this would make it easier for the town, and it would make it easier for the citizens to get, to get in touch with, with you. You know, if your, if yours was always p dot help at mountairymaryland.org.
Yeah.
Okay, then, you know, you, you would always be.
Yeah, we should make it available.
Easily accessible.
How do we, is there web access or do you have to have a laptop? How do we access?
I've gotta look into it with Lee. I'm, I'm gonna.
You just like Outlook Express.
Staff access is from all over the place. They all have.
You just use Outlook? You can do it. Outlook Express.
Yeah.
I do, I do company email.
Well, that's my question, is if it's available, if it's Outlook Express available over the web on any laptop versus you got, you've got a VPN in to hit the exchange server. That's the question. Can you reach it from home, Debbie?
We have to set it up for me.
Right, you just go to a website and then you.
Right, there's a certain thing I have to do.
But this is a very, the, the question's really, really specific. Do you just hit a website?
Is it, it's VPN?
It's VPN and you have to.
You have to log into a server to get it? You don't just put in the mail server username, password, and grab it? That's what he's asking.
There's, there's several steps.
I know what you're asking. I don't do several steps.
Always works.
But, but, sorry. If you're at any place on the, any place, and you sit down in front of a computer that's not yours, how do you access email? You don't, so you gotta, you gotta VPN it.
Right, and that's what they just told you, they're VPNing. But I don't have to VPN to do mine.
But there might be some other way.
You mean, you're, you mean you're, you're one you've got now?
No, my work, my work email account, I don't have to. I can hit any web browser and hit the address and type my username and password and pull it in, or I can have my phone pull it down without having to VPN.
It seems to me they should be able to do that, too.
They can. It just has to be configured that way. They're not doing it that way right now. That's a different service, and that's what Chris is asking.
Right, okay.
But why are you asking?
Well, because if, let's say for whatever reason you don't, somebody who's a council member or mayor does not have a laptop.
Do they have any electronic means whatsoever? If they don't, then they're not getting email. So problem solved.
So let's say that, okay, so let's say they have a laptop, but they can't install any other software.
You don't need to install any software. We can talk about it offline. It's very easy.
It can be done. See, I, I just know, I've, I've sat through days with Debbie dealing with PIA requests. And we've also had issues with council members who have flat out not turned over data after we've gotten PIA requests.
Or forgotten.
Yeah, or, I don't have any, I don't have this. And, and that's a real problem. Um, and Tom, we've had the issue of, you know, First Amendment rights and everything else. I, I can't imagine that being an issue here. We require our staff to use the town servers. We, you know, we can all, we can all have all the free emails we want, but our town emails should go.
How, how long am I required on my personal email to retain the email that I get from this town?
But that's a different story, though. That's a different story. Yeah, I, I don't know that we ha, we certainly don't have an ordinance to that effect. And I don't know that we have a policy to that effect. Just, just to what Peter said, um, the two things, one on First Amendment, you know. I'm, I'm not a First Amendment expert. My, uh, what I would imagine you'd find is, is that that does not sufficiently limit the ability to engage in free speech. It's simply a policy that says, you know, email traffic to the extent you wish to use it and receive it on official business comes through the town, um, uh, first and foremost. On the PIA thing, you're absolutely right. Um, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of an instance where we didn't get emails that we should have from somebody who had it on, on a personal.
We had to jump through a lot of hoops to get it.
Right. But you do have that extra hoop, and you don't have the ability, as you do if it's through the town's service, to verify that you're getting everything. You're sort of relying, and many times, on former town officials who aren't any longer officials. And, you know, um, I think we've gotten good cooperation, but you do have to hunt them. You gotta track them down. Sometimes the requests go way back, so, you know, we've gotta start pulling out our lists. Okay, who was it back then?
Yeah, we're pulling back to, what, two thousand nine?
Yeah, in some instances. Um, so, you know, it, it would make things easier to respond to PIAs and would give us greater verification that we're producing everything we're supposed to be producing.
But is that just because we make it available, or is there, I don't know if there's a motion to make it a policy, because we'd be the only municipality that does that.
Doesn't matter to me whether we're the only one, but Scott?
So the, the only thing that I would kinda say is that if you're using town resources, the public's paid for those resources. They should have access to anything with the appropriate process in place to get to those emails. Therefore, if we as a town have a council email, they should be able to get to those council emails with a PIA request and get to them. In regards to your own personal email, if you're giving that out to conduct town business or otherwise, that is on the individual that you made that choice to do that. You do not have to use that email in lieu of the position that we hold. So.
But you would still have to turn that data over with the PIA.
Right, to the degree that the individual keeps it or whatever, because there's no policy that can conform you to say, you know what? I'm gonna pick on Pat, because he's here. You need to keep every single email that you've ever had in your entire life and make sure your mail server had it and everything else, because there's things outside of your control. Town server, we control, speaking of control. Therefore, we can control how much email's retained, set policies in place, username and password can be established and given to a council person so that staff can be able to pull it if they need to without that council person being here, because we're serving that role and is a town resource.
How much, well, and here, and here, here's even another.
It can all be done.
Here's an, even another point. How much money would you save? Someone puts a PIA request in, and you've got a, and staff now has to look through paper copies, the attorney has to look through paper copies, it's twenty different accounts scattered all over the world. That's expensive. If it all sits.
They get mine in paper.
Right, if it all sits.
They have to read them all.
Right, and how much, how much, how much staff time and how much attorney time does it take to do that? If it all sits on a central server, you have archiving, search capability, it's a lot cheaper for everybody, so, um.
Debbie can talk to the time she stands.
So I would propose, I would propose that, I, I propose right now, because the council, the council under the charter, the council has the ability to set pol, uh, its own rules and policies. I would propose that the council adopt a policy that mandates all council persons must use town email for official business starting with the next term. Now, I don't, that's a council policy I'm proposing. I don't think it applies to the executive branch, but that's my proposal.
So, the one inquiry, and not that I don't support that, Chris, is the fact that in this little spreadsheet here, it, I, I just wanna make sure I'm reading it right, that it says, basically, everybody is using town email services. They're provided and they use them. I see very few that say they.
Where do you say they're using them?
All uses town emails, all uses town emails.
I'm just, no, there's, I think that's saying that they're available, yeah.
There's only a few of those. If you flip it over, it's saying. If you flip it over, it's saying almost everybody uses it.
Especially in the back.
Rosemont, Brunswick.
Let's go with the one.
Burkittsville, Emmitsburg, Frederick, Middletown, Myersville, they're all using town emails. Um, Rosemont doesn't say.
They don't, they don't have a town website, I don't think. Do you?
Uh, very few of them say no, they're using personal emails. I would think it would be more risk averse for the town just to say.
I, I think if you read that, it's mixed. It's very much mixed. And then if you read the summary up top, through my discussions with each one, it appears, it appears that the town email was issued more as a courtesy and not a mandatory policy.
Well, I, I, again, I.
True, you don't have to use town email.
While it may be easier to track downtown business while I use a one email account, it appears it is fifty fifty split among municipalities and doing it.
I see, I see.
I'm just giving you history.
No, no, I appreciate that, I wanna make sure I was reading it right.
I see no compelling reason for, for people on, use it, for conducting town, town business, which is official government business to be using personal emails. So, there's my proposal that I propose, starting again, you have my proposal.
I, I, Chris, I, I will second that.
And I, I will be right behind it too. Going for the next term.
This is for discussion, I don't, I don't.
For the council.
I'm not against it, I know it's for the council, but you're still gonna have to pull your own email. You're still, and your PIA, PIA request, you're still gonna go, so now you're gonna be going through two accounts.
No, well, no, no you're not.
No. They only pull your personal email if you use your personal.
Unless, unless you're conducting business on your personal email, which we're gonna have to stop doing.
Hit my personal email, what happened?
Oh, I instantly got a response, do not send email to us.
Well, I'm gonna take my councilman email and it's gonna just pull people automatically to the town one.
Yeah, I'm just gonna forward, go forward.
Cause it's just forward.
If I, if I'm ever elected.
But, but here's, here's the thing, and Bob just brought up something good to clarify your point. Town email can be inquired through a PIA. Somebody can go and say, I wanna get information for your home account and depending on what your policies are for keeping your own personal information, you may not have anything at all. You may delete your email every single day. You didn't have anything. By doing it through a town email and you tell everybody, I only do email. Bob was bringing up his instance for the general public. I sent him an email and accidentally hit his home account and he said, do not send me email to my private account. Fine, we all start, that's a policy change. We have any town stuff go through town email. Town staff can have a policy in place that they can pull it if they need to, Debbie, whoever's designated, so I.
I'm just saying it's cumbersome, you can't enforce it.
You have my proposal.
And I, and I second it and this could, would give Lee a couple of months to get it sorted out.
Yep. But we can only, we can only do that going forward.
If he finds it's unworkable, he can come back to us and say.
My proposal is again, starting next term.
Yeah, next term.
So, it'd be May.
It takes time.
Yeah.
A little check.
Any more discussion?
And again, this applies only to.
Okay, well, we, like, Chris made a motion, I seconded. Don't hear any more discussions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bob was gonna aye or what?
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess.
It was a, it was a soft aye.
I had a, I had a, I had a question that maybe this is something that, you know, since it's not, May is not next month, maybe we could, we could sit on this for a month.
Well, that's why Lee can get to work, Lee will never, he has to work on it. And if he comes back to us and it's not workable, we can always change the policy.
Okay.
And it's next election cycle.
Okay.
Yeah, the policy hasn't been put in front of us and implemented.
We do a policy just to let you know, it's typed out, it's signed by Pat and Monty, get it put in the book.
Okay.
It may not be signed by Pat.
It may not be signed by, no, I'm not against it.
Veto, bam.
I'm not against it. I think we all should.
Alright.
We all should use it. I just say it's cumbersome, you can't enforce it.
He, he did a soft.
I'm sure it's legal and I'm sure we can enforce it.
Yeah, alright, are we good?
Okay, yeah.
In the interest of time.
Uh, Barney, you've got an aye and aye on here.
Yep, this is from the November meeting. I don't know if you got a copy of what was used, November meeting.
I don't think.
When did you give it, December?
We don't have one in our package.
Do you?
Wanna use the old one?
Yes, they got it right here.
Okay.
Can't want it back.
You wanna look at it there?
Yeah, sure.
Sure we're not doing something really stupid? Thanks.
We have in our budget already, uh, money for the aye and aye, we just wanna start spending it. Um, we're going through our consultant for this work and, um, there she goes. Many reasons, if Brian was here, we can maybe.
Goodbye Amethyst.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Amethyst.
Okay, Barney.
If Brian was here, we could probably elaborate on some of those reasons, but, um, we do have stations, all of our sewer pump stations have two pumps, right? Each, each pump's designed to pump the entire amount of flow that comes through that pump station. Um, one's supposed to be a backup to the other.
I would choose it myself.
In some cases, we do have to run both pumps at one station. If one of those goes down, we're not gonna keep up with the flow coming through that station. And it's because of all the extra excess aye and aye that's going through.
I guess to cut short on this, Barney, we budgeted this already. This is just approving their next order, their next order.
Yes, I can.
I, I will move that we accept the staff recommendation for the approval of task order number nine.
Can I, and now is this.
Let's get a second.
And I think, I think the, the reason that, that.
I got a second from Scott, go ahead Bob.
I think the reason that this was put on hold is because of the, well, we'll call it the rain tax for, everybody knows what that is. Okay, we're in an agreement with Carroll County. We will get reimbursed for a portion of these projects. And I think we decided several months ago to wait until we found out whether if we started early, we would get reimbursed. If you get reimbursed, we might, we might get all of this paid for, eighty percent of this paid for.
And I see Dick standing there ready to answer that question.
I can, I can answer that question.
Okay.
Unless you want to. We did talk with Carroll County, we also talked with the state. Uh, we do not know if this will qualify.
Right.
As a rain tax project as of yet. What we, what we do know is that we fall under the Carroll County's MS Word and we are already in, in that schedule timeframe that any projects that we do now, if it can be, um.
If it can, it will.
It will be. It will be.
Alright, and that's, that's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, good question Bob, good question.
It's a little more complicated than that because in order to get qualified for any manhole remediation work that we've been down to the Carroll County side, the eighty twenty split cost wise, uh, we need the approval of the WRCC to do that and the project has not been submitted to them. On the Frederick County side, you're absolutely correct, uh, we're gonna pay for it anyway. Um, and the consensus, although, uh, I guess MD finally came out with a fairly clear statement that said that anything we did now would qualify for credits against the stormwater remediation. So, the only remaining issue is, is any, um, uh, parts of this that have to do with the Carroll County side, it's debatable whether we have to wait and get approval if we wanna try to push the i- issue of whether we get credit against stormwater management.
And to address that, this is two hundred thousand that we're doing for aye and aye that we're doing anyhow. We need to do anyhow.
Right.
Regardless. So, whether we get credit for it, I, the question was, do we have to wait till July first? Do we have to wait for something else? But because we're under the county, we don't have to wait. It's a question whether it's gonna qualify. If it does qualify, we'll get reimbursed for eighty percent of it.
Can you submit it enough after the fact?
Yes.
So, it doesn't matter?
Correct. So, if it doesn't qualify, we, we need to do a project anyhow. If it's an aye and aye project.
We're gonna spend money anyway.
And this is a serious issue too, because on a, on an average month, we're sixty two or sixty three, point six two or point six three million gallons a day through the wastewater treatment plant. When we have one of those busy ones, okay, we had a month, a couple of months back where it was one point one eight million, million gallons.
And we only handle one point two.
We've been over two million.
Right. And, and that, and it's all.
But what's more important is, is the sewer pump stations.
Right.
Because they're, you're gonna exceed those before you're gonna see.
No one exceed your sewer pump stations, Scott.
So, what I think I heard was, we gotta do it anyways. If we can get the credit for it, great, but we're voting on approving to do it regardless.
I, I agree too.
Yeah, I, I moved, you seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Chris?
Hey, Barney, it's, um, is this going on competitive?
It, it's going through our consultant who has gotten prices for, um, for doing these services.
But my question is, is it, was it done competitive?
It's going, it's going through our A and E services through the way procurement process through the A and E.
So.
We, we've already competitively bid.
You bid the prices and they're going by those prices.
They put it through the process and they competitively bid it out?
Well, I'm sorry, I thought I heard, we gave it to the consultant, the consultant priced it.
Right, but we did competitively bid the consultant through qualifications.
No, okay, so, what you did was, is you got one consultant that we found and said, yep, this is the one we're gonna go with. Chris is asking you for this service, did we price it out through everybody, not this consultant that says we need to do?
We didn't bid out this service, we bid out the, the consultant services four years ago.
As part of a tug package, it was bid out.
So, I, I mean, it's two thousand, two thousand bucks a manhole, that's a lot of money. So, i- if we went to the consultant who we, I know we hired the consult, the consultant's not doing the work, they're subbing it, correct?
Yes, but they've gotten prices from seven different companies.
So, the consultant did, bid, did sub it competitively?
Yes.
Great, that's all I wanna know. He didn't say that at first, you, you.
It took a while to get there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ken, were you a yes right now?
Yes.
He's a yes.
He's a soft yes.
All yes.
He's a soft.
Softy.
Alrighty. Uh, Bruce, uh, election update?
We're going to have an election.
Bruce Wallace, chairman of the board of election supervisors, and yes, we're going to have another election.
Woo! But hopefully this will be the last special election we'll have to have because this should put us into the regular cycle with regular terms. And so, the nominations, as you know, we will have two nomination meetings. We have one, one week, then there's a week and then another meeting for that. There will be three positions open, so this will be a block of the council. And that will be up for, uh, the seats that will be open will be Peter Halt, Bob King and Chris Average. So, those seats will be open. We encourage people to consider running, uh, so that we can have a contested election. The first nominating meeting will be on March ninth, uh, at seven PM here at the town hall.
I gotta be here.
Then there will be, as I said, a week during which nominations can be submitted to the town hall during that period. And then we will have a final call for nominations on March sixteenth, uh, also here at town hall at seven PM, at which time we will review any nominations that have been submitted during the week and we will formalize the ballot at that time, accept the nominations and close the nominations. Uh, if you are going to be nominated, you need to have, uh, provide to the board, uh, your agreement to serve in writing. Uh, so, if you have someone come to nominate or if someone wants to nominate someone, they need to have that person's permission in writing. Don't just show up and nominate someone, uh, that hasn't agreed in advance to be not, uh, put forth as a nominee. And of course, you can self nominate, uh, if you like. Uh, the election will be held on May fourth, which is the first Monday in May, our typical election day. Uh, and it will be held at the Fireman's Activities Building at one thousand eight Twin Arch Road. Uh, we are planning on opening the polls at our usual time from seven AM in the morning to eight PM. And as usual, we will be using, uh, voting machines, electronic voting machines. Uh, absentee ballots will be available starting April first and they can be, um, obtained here at town hall. Also, I want to let everyone know that the last day to register, uh, to vote in the town election will be April sixth at close of business at five PM. It's April sixth, close of business at five PM. If you are a registered voter in Carroll County or Frederick County, you are already registered and eligible to vote in the town elections. But if you are new to the area and have just moved into the town or into the state, uh, or county and you have not registered to vote, uh, please do so by the April sixth deadline. Um, forms are available at the library and at town hall for registration. And that's, uh, gives you an overview of the process and we hope to have a good turnout. Um, as you may have seen in some of the news releases, uh, when we had our meeting here, uh, last week of the, of the board, we, last year had only about seven percent of the town, uh, voting. And so, we'd like to encourage everyone to come out and vote, uh, exercise your right, uh, make your opinions heard and also consider running, uh, for these open seats. Any questions?
That's all from Scott.
No?
You say that, just so I understand, cause I think I've gotten this backwards, aren't we trying to get off of the election cycle so we can use the voting machines?
No.
Got it, I got it wrong again.
It's the, it's the day you cut off.
It's the voter registration.
Voter registration day is a killer.
Okay, then explain to me offline, cause I was confused. At first I thought we were trying to do this to get online with the state, then I was told, no, we wanna get offline so we can use the voting machines.
It's gonna be odd, it's gonna be odd years and they're even.
We don't use our machines.
We all be in the opposite.
We wanna be on cycle.
We were even years. We were making elections on even years so they couldn't.
To be on cycle means that we're hitting when they're not using.
Okay, the.
You're saying it right.
Yeah, okay.
We're not gonna be on the same year as the state.
We're not gonna be on the same year as the state, okay.
And that means you're on cycle.
We could have their support available too.
That's what I thought.
It's not the machines.
They were too busy.
It's the support of the local election.
It's the support, not the machine, gotcha.
Because they closed, they, what they'll make available to us is limited.
So, to be on cycle, we're off cycle with the state.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
That's why it doesn't make any sense.
Yes. It's very cycling.
What, what happened is when the state moved the primary date back.
Moved it to June.
It, to June. Maryland used to have a late primary now and has an early presidential primary.
Right.
And it began to conflict with the state's capability to provide us with voter data that we needed, because they would close their time.
So, we had to get off of that cycle.
So, we had to get off. They came to us and said, you have to get off, we cannot support you.
Yeah, so that's why we've gone through these series of elections.
These last couple of years, we've had these.
Shortened terms and things like that to get everybody on.
Well, I, I just, I was just trying to fully understand why, okay.
Cause we ran for, we ran for three year terms last time.
That was, that's good way.
Three year term, yeah, three year, right.
Okay, thank you.
That's to get us all.
That was it, I was trying to get.
Be shortened, come out and vote.
Thanks Bruce.
Thanks. Thank you Bruce.
Downtown parking, um, environment development, this is, this is Chris, this is you.
Over Alfred to Bob. This is, they, the EDC didn't meet.
Yeah, um, we are.
It's snow.
The planning, planning commission got snowed out with, with one of their meetings and it was a very important meeting about, um, Harrison Lashir and all this kinda stuff. So, um, graciously, the, the town, um, community development coordinator came to us and asked us to be cooperative and so we're, the next EDC meeting is on the eleventh. We, we got bumped out, so we did not have an EDC meeting, so I did not get an opportunity to, to talk to EDC about it.
Alright. Next up, Tom wants more money. And, um, when I saw what he charges us guys, he's a steal. You can't get anybody for these dollars.
Shh, 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 we're overpaying the man.
Wait, 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 we're on the rate, rate increase? That's why it's not free.
Yeah, it says town attorney rate increase request.
So, you gave us a request?
Yeah, I mean, just so people know.
You're writing at the email.
I didn't get the email, so. But that's okay.
See, if you're on the town email, that wouldn't happen.
Why do you think I voted for it?
It's in the package, Bob.
That's fine.
Yeah, just so everybody knows, I guess, the, um, the, the rate that I currently charge is one seventy-five an hour. And then, uh, essentially, if I use associate time, it's less than that, paralegal time, even less than that. Uh, the rates that I have charged, uh, have been the same since I became town attorney, and in fact, are the same as my predecessor. I just simply, we kept the same hourly rate. So, that's probably spanned something on the order of seven years. Um, you know, I, like any business, and this aspect of it, I, I really don't frankly enjoy, but, um, you know, like any business, our, our expenses increase. And so, in light of that, and in light of the time that's gone by, um, I've requested a ten-dollar in, per hour increase for my rate, so, associate and paralegal rates, just to try and, uh, offset those increased costs over the years.
Hey, guys, that, that is a, that's a dirt cheap rate. Uh, that is a dirt cheap rate.
Peter, the rate's competitive.
I, I, I wouldn't work for anywhere near that low. And then, here in Mount Airy.
Wow, I would simply say that.
Thank you, Pete.
At least, the least my office will touch anything is two hundred bucks an hour.
Yeah, and certainly for private business.
For somebody in a big firm in Baltimore, I gotta believe, I wouldn't be surprised if, I mean, I'm sure he charges a lot more.
I wouldn't. Discussion's over.
You owe me time.
Yeah.
The rate's competitive. I think that was a question.
Can I get back over and revise my letter? Did I send ten dollars there? No, I, uh, but in all seriousness, we do charge more, we charge less for municipal work, um, and, and then it is a recognition of- Tax per dollar.
That's because we're worthless.
No, because we're always trying to keep our taxes under control.
Time to move on.
Do we have to vote on this? Or is it just, is, was it just information?
Yes.
I've been in the budget, right? So, there's no budget amendment needed, no budget.
The town council, I looked at the charter, and it says the town council sets the rate, so that's why it's before you.
I'm in motion.
And I will, I'll move that we increase all the, Bob is moving that they increase all the rates by ten dollars an hour.
That's correct.
And I will second that.
And then, in all seriousness.
But they already set the rate when they put that money in the budget, correct? Yeah, let's, let's, and suspenders vote on it if you like.
Well, the budget, the budget's got a dollar number on it.
Yeah, it's just the chart, you're right about that.
I don't need to come back to give somebody a raise. If it's in the budget, I can do it.
Right, I, I'm just being s- belting suspenders back because of what the charter says.
Yeah, because of how it reads.
Right, and then in all, right, in all seriousness, the rate clearly is competitive, so we're, so.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Now, with that comes a twenty-year locking clause.
Okay, we got-
That would be my problem.
We've got a reduction in bonding on Sterling Glen Phase Two.
And you should have the paperwork when you're dead.
Yes, we do, and the requested amount was four hundred and forty-four thousand ninety-two dollars and forty cents. And the recommendation was five hundred and fourteen ninety-three forty. So, you're actually recommending a good bit more than requested.
Right, they were eligible.
That's odd, but that's wrong.
We like to be odd sometimes. They were actually eligible, um, for a full release, release of their, um, road paving, curb and gutter.
I, I will move that we release as recommended. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll pick either of them.
I think Chris had him.
Any, any discussion?
I hadn't had one.
I'm dealing with younger people here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Next one up, um.
I think I like the contentious council.
Reduction in funding, Twin Arch Business Park Phase Three. They requested one hundred and thirty-eight six, and staff has recommended sixty-five six.
Yeah, one.
I will rec, move that we release as recommended.
And can we get the explanation as to why?
I wrote it on the notice.
It says ten percent, uh, not eligible because, not eligible to be released because.
They didn't finish something. It says right here.
Some walkthrough inspection.
Until they're one-year warranty.
Okay.
One-year warranty. Okay, thank you. Second.
We got a second on that? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Moving on.
Uh, we have the O P E on here. Chris, you wanted to discuss that.
Again, um, and, and this will also constitute, I guess, my planning and, my planning commission. There is no planning and zoning.
Do you want to just cover that under your planning and zoning report, the O P E?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, let's just, we'll move it there.
Yeah, we'll move it there.
Yeah.
It's just a reminder.
Mayor's report.
Okay, I'm gonna make this quick.
Gotta boot you up one there.
Thank you. Winter, winter weather, just as a reminder, everybody out there, you have within twenty-four hours of a snowfall to clear your sidewalks, and also, if you can clear the bus stops, it helps if you have extra energy. And also, clear the fire hydrants, because your house may be the one on fire, and if we get a deep four-foot snowfall and the guys can't get to that fire hydrant, there's a problem. So, uh, please help them out with that. Town safety, a lot of people have New Year's resolutions. Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe you can park your cars in your driveway instead of the streets. I think it would help the snow plow a lot, if you can park your cars in the driveway instead of on the street.
That's, that's good, and in fact, if it's a snow emergency plan, and if we have more than a couple inches, you have to do that. You have to get it off the street. But thank you for reminding me, Ken. I should have said that. Town safety, due to New Year's resolutions, whatever, people are out there jogging, but it's dark out there. It's hard to see these people, especially at night. So, uh, wear reflective clothing, wear something. You're hard to see. We have a very fit community. I want to keep you safe. Uh, I won't go into town nominations, the town budget, I won't go into that. It's written in my report. If I were mayor contest, it's getting ready to kick off again. Bob's been with me for a couple of years. I may talk to some other people, see if they're interested. Uh, this year's theme is respect.
I'm getting voted out.
Well, maybe or maybe not. I'm just, you know, trying to share the love. Uh, frequently asked questions. This is something I'm doing a little different in our town updates. If people are wondering why those cones are still down there on Main Street, well, the State Highway Administration has not yet approved railing plans. Barney's working to try to push them. We know it's an I S O on Main Street. We want to get those cones off. In fact, I had to stop with the wind, because they were halfway in the street and throw them back up on the curb. Uh, what's going on with the historic bank building downtown? I get asked that a lot. Well, the site plan obstacles impacting development of that have been resolved, and we are looking forward to developing. I did run that by the developer, by the way.
I recall.
Uh, what's going on with the Super Fresh site? Well, the Carroll Health Group still has plans to operate a wellness center in that facility. They anticipate an opening date of the center is twelve to fourteen months away from today. And the biggest special nugget, has anybody caught Taylor Swift's new blank space video?
No.
Okay, you should, because two, two big white horses in that video are from Mount Airy. They're from Mount Airy's Spring Fever Farms. They're predominantly featured in that hit video, okay? Those are Mount Airy horses in that video, so it's big. Mayor's Community Forums, February fourteenth and twenty-eighth, come down and meet me. We have several openings, Special Ward Commission. That, uh, concludes my mayor's report. I have some.
Appointments.
Appointments. Where are they?
I was looking for my copy too. I didn't second one. I, I know you emailed them two, and they were all fun.
Okay, I'd like to recommend, whoa, we got a whole, a lot of them.
Yeah.
Uh, and the Ethics Commission terms have been adjusted, so you'll see some adjustments in these. Dick Swat, the adjustments are all written out there. I won't go through them, but it's Dick Swanson, Carol Rose, Jeff Maggi, Heather Hobbs, and you'll see new dates there, so I ask that you approve that. Uh, reappoint, reassign Frank Dirtsball to the Economic Development Commission, and John Stumeyer to Streets and Roads. Uh, I want him to go from an alternate to a full member.
I will move we accept those recommendations.
I'll second.
Got a second from Bob. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Alright, E D C, Water and Sewer.
Okay, E D C, I already told you about the meeting being bumped by the Planning Commission. Rank was pulled on us, but, uh, our next meeting will, is, our next meeting is scheduled for February the eleventh, Wednesday, February the eleventh at seven thirty P M. right here in town hall. Um, Water and Sewer, the average daily flow for the past month was point seven two seven million gallons per day. Um, gosh. Dick, at, at our last meeting, the Water and Sewer Commission unanimously voted to request that all monies in reserves that are earmarked for Water and Sewer be kept in those accounts and not used for any other purpose. Um, there was, there was talk about earmarked money can be moved by the town council, and we're asking that that not happen. That, that money is in Water and Sewer and being safe for emergencies.
Of course, you have to realize what happens is if the council voted to earmark that money so it couldn't be moved, the council would later just vote to overturn that if it decided to move it.
I, I understand that.
I mean, that is, that is the way it works.
I think we're looking more for a public statement of support that, that our, our, our Water and Sewer money's not going to be building a community zone.
And Bob, Bob, for the record, there's never, I'm not aware of any plan at all, or any even hint that such a thing is a plan.
We on Water and Sewer always, you know, we deal with the dirty stuff, so, you know.
And I just, just, there's no.
We just, we just wanted everybody to understand how we feel.
Bob, I would, I, I have no problem with that. I mean, if you want to put together an ordinance or something to make it more official.
No, no, it, it's not necessary. Just a, just a statement without, without being over bold.
Yeah, I mean, we all think the same way. I mean, you know, Parks has got money that's sitting there. We thought that's ours.
Yeah, take the Parks money, but we have our Water and Sewer money alone.
Peter, Peter, I think this stems from, I think this stems from somebody had the idea, someone's claiming, someone thought that the strategic financial plan we're doing, we're gonna rob the money from one account to put it somewhere else, and there's.
Something about drunken pirates are thinking in the email.
Yeah, um, and, I mean, there's no movement afoot to do it.
Okay.
About the pirates, though.
Is that it, Bob?
That's it.
Alright, beautification, Parks and Rec. Still not used to the fact that that's me. I've been with Streets and Roads for a long time. Alright, beautification, um.
We're done.
Beautification, uh, discussed several main issues. One of the things we're discussing right now is redoing Vest Pocket Park, kind of fixing up Vest Pocket. They're looking at, uh, kind of a, a unique idea for up there. In addition to the, you know, regular benches like we have, we're actually thinking of maybe putting in a swinging bench. You know, one of those ones that's got the structure above it and hangs on a swing, putting one of those in. Um, obviously, they're. Huh?
Can it be grew?
They're doing.
Did you sprinkle your fairy dust on him, Mary?
They're, um, they're busy, you know, working about, you know, and it's great, because when you talk to them, it's like, you know, oh, we're gonna go out and plant these flowers, and we're gonna do this, it's, it's, you know, they really have a, uh, you know, uh, they're fingered doing that kind of stuff. Uh, one question we had, in case anybody on staff or anybody knows anything, is about the mayor's sign. In Prospect Park, there's a mayor's sign.
Being taken care of, being taken care of.
Okay, I thought I saw somewhere.
I'm working, I'm working with the Boy Scouts, and, uh, your name's going on.
To re-carve it?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Because it's three years old.
It's nine, it's nine years outdated, and I'm working with, uh, Mr. Seidel.
Okay, good. Well, there we go. So, good, good. I'm glad I, glad I put that on my notes to bring up.
We're working together.
Um, the, um, East West sign should be going in in the next couple of months.
They were working on it yesterday.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Peter, you should talk to us. We have all these answers.
Okay, I, I have driven by it. I know that, I, I went out there when they had it marked out. I, I thought the weather had been, thought the weather had been too bad. Okay, good. So, the East West Park sign, which is gonna look like the other parks' signs that we've already had, that'll be going in soon. And, um, you know, they're always looking for people to volunteer, to do planting, weeding, all those kinds of things. Alright, on to, on to Parks and Rec.
Can I ask, Mary, is that, um, the bench, Vest Pocket Park?
Vest Pocket Park.
Is that, that's a potential Eagle project?
No, we were looking at purchasing, you know, a steel-structured, uh, commit. Yeah.
Is it, could we turn it into it? Is it, does it, I, I don't want to say.
I probably wouldn't want one that's not made, unless the guy's a welder, I probably wouldn't want that.
That's what I'm thinking.
But, you know, the one thing that we're doing, the, um, we're gonna re-line the, um, the timbers that are in there all the way around it.
With stone.
They come stone.
Yeah.
So, that could be an Eagle project.
Is that enough, Larry, do you think?
I, I think it would be.
It's a huge.
They're, they're heavy stones. We had one here for a while. I was looking for it.
Alright, because I know some kids that are starting to look for Eagle projects, so I'll, um, I'll bring that up to them.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, email them.
And, and perhaps, you know.
And I know one that's not gonna get his driver's license unless he gets to see.
And, and if we decide to go with the swinging bench, installing that could be part of the project, because somebody's gonna have to plant that concrete, if that's the route we take. Yeah, because it's a pole system with a bench hanging in between.
I, I know a fine young citizen of Mount Airy who will not get his driver's license unless he gets, gets an Eagle project. Um, let, let me, I'll drop back to the, uh, the, um, the question about O P E and.
No, we're still, I'm still, I'm still Parks. That's okay. Still on Parks and Rec. Okay, um.
Thanks.
Well, it's much, oh, well, one of the things Parks and Rec's looking at is doing maybe more movies this summer. We're also looking at adding another movie distributor to the mix, so we can get perhaps a broader range of pictures. Um, one of the, one of the questions that came up, no, you can't do that. One of the questions that came up, somebody said, hey, how about, um, um, Indiana Jones? Somebody mentioned, hey, why don't we show Indiana Jones a bunch? I was like, hey, that'd be great. I'd come out to see that one. That's a great picture. Well, the distributor we use doesn't have that one.
Right.
But another distributor that apparently may actually charge a little less does, so we're looking at, at widening the movies by widening the number of distributors. There's also a substantial discussion on the park usage, assigning the fields and everything. Brian Johnson is working on a project to try and sort out that, because we're having more and more groups coming to the town wanting to borrow our fields, and of course, you get into the issue of, well, you know, are you a town group? Are you not a town group? Have you had it the longest? How many kids do you have? How many of them are Mount Airy percentages? You know, and it's, Brian's gonna try to come up with something to, uh, assign these fields out. You know, to stop the trading. Of course, the, the biggest issue that, uh, is coming up is the caboose, bag, and basket bingo. The caboose part of the Rails to Trails project is coming back. There are other things going on in the Rails to Trails. You can, Larry will send you these emails about when you can go out there and dig things and push dirt around, and gravel, and all that kind of stuff.
When it's warmer.
But the caboose, but the, the, I mean, I, I, you know, every, it's like almost every day, I see an email about some other business, you know, s- uh, supporting this. Uh, so, any businesses out there that want to support this, you know, go ahead. I know, you know, my law firm sent in something to be a supporter. It looks like it's gonna be a big project to support the caboose. This is going to be February twenty-eighth at five thirty at the Mount Airy Middle School. So, be there or be square, and I believe that is Parks. And that takes us to recycling and sou, no, planning. Sorry, Chris, you have.
No, that's okay. It's alright, it's alright. Um, thank you. Planning had a, a meeting with, um, last week with I D A, the representative from I D A, the, uh, county's, um, development authority, who's responsible for the util, utilization of the Harrison Leger. So, a little bit of background, right? The town has been in the, Harrison Leger property is just north of town, north of Watersville Avenue. The I, the concept at a very high level is the town, the county owns the property. The county would take the lower part of the property, turn it into an employment campus. The upper part of the property would, is available potentially for a well for the town, as well as, um, eighty or so acres of recreation space. Now that our master plan is now complete, um, the I, the, the concept of annexing, potentially annexing Harrison Leger now, now starts to come into play. Part of whether or not we decide to annex remains to be seen, but the next stage now is negotiations between the Planning Commission and the county's I D A over what's called an O P E, or Office Park and Employment Zone. So, if the land were annexed, the town would control it, but of course, the county is the one that owns the land and has the investment. So, they have a vested interest in making sure that whatever zoning we come up with to control the land is acceptable to the county, so the county's economic investment pay, pays off. So, planning is, the recommendation is, planning is now going to start working with the I D A directly to discuss mutually what we'd like to see in the zoning regulations. Now, the reason why I'm going to this in a little bit too much detail, as I usually do. It would help planning if the council would provide this evening some general guidelines of what the council would or would not like to see in the O P E zone. So, I'll, I'll give you two thoughts of mine right off the bat. My first thought is, number one, no matter what we do, the O P E zone can do nothing to harm our businesses downtown and along Center Street. So, there can't be anything that would be done in the O P E zoning, this office, I'm sorry, this employment campus zone, that would endanger our downtown business.
That, that would be my requirement.
Alright, and then, and then my other requirement, or my other principle is that the town is absolutely interested in acquiring those eighty or so acres and well to, for recreation. So, thoughts from the council about high-level guidance for planning on this, if there isn't. Peter, you're as well.
Yeah, I, I was at the meeting, and, and, you know, I heard, you know, some of the business owners of town saying things like, for example, you know, in the building right next door, we've got a bunch of, you know, currently vacant, um, commercial space for rent, for offices. You know, and, and they want to build, you know, more on this side of Main Street, and they, you know, the issue that was raised is, why are you gonna have the county build one out there when we got space here, we can't rent already?
That's exactly right.
Um, you know, the county was in here talking about a big manufacturing plant that they did up in Westminster. Um, I was impressed by that, you know, something like that would be great. It would take nothing from here, and it would only, you know, add good quality jobs, and, you know, so something like that would be great. Um, how, how you work this, you know, is gonna be tough. I mean, a restaurant, I don't know, we need more, you know, restaurants now. I don't, we don't want to give that much water up. A little deli, you know, we discussed like a little deli in there, so people who are working can go down and get their Cracker Jack and their code red to keep them up for the rest of the day like I do. That'd be fun.
Okay, Scott?
So, I think one of the problems you have is the statement you made. You don't want it to take away from any business here. It's been brought up a bunch of times. When I was on planning, I know that we've had discussions with I D A about what they want to do in there or not. One of the concerning things I hear right this second, which it seems this number keeps getting smaller and smaller, is the amount of parkland that we get to compensate us bringing in this property to the town. It started out about a hundred and twenty-plus acres. All of a sudden, it's gone down to eighty acres. They want to keep forty on reserve. They want to keep a portion of the well water for themselves, which granted, I haven't been involved with all the conversations for Harrison Leger since Councilman Blaze left, and that kind of panned off. But I know that it was constantly heading more towards, in my opinion at the moment, a less viable alternative for the town, for the return that we would get for bringing it in, the annexation. With regards to the comment about taking away from the businesses here, we have empty properties. I know that people have ended up commenting about that, um, example, Scranton's property across the way, why, um, by Blooming Basket. He wanted to end up turning.
Rail yard.
The rail yard, thank you. Wanted to turn around and put small businesses and stuff in like that into the first floor to help compensate for the cost associated with it. Well, he ended up saying there would be problems with doing that, because it, why is somebody gonna want to move into that space, or the bank building if they do it, if a similar space is available out there at a new fancy business park where they can do that? Um, some of the other things I'm just gonna throw out is the traffic problems that we'll have. We're saying we don't want to impact businesses in town, yet we're going to increase the amount of traffic associated with it. Now, I want to caveat, I'm not against Harrison Leger and what could be done out there. I just haven't heard enough about it. So, to say, what am I for or against in an O P E zoning, and what does this council want to recommend, I don't know yet, because I haven't heard anything.
Right.
Other than, here's a lot of property we're gonna give you for parklands, and then we'll kind of work with you. So, I guess. So I guess I would ask back, if you've been involved with those discussions, I'd like some type of report of where are we on this discussion with Harrison-Legir?
Sure.
To the council, so that we can make a decision on, here's what we want or don't want.
So let me, let me clarify that, so the, the task to planning is strictly the O P E zone. The negotiations between how much land the town gets, how much land that rests here in the council, the negotiations about traffics and traffic and impacts, again, that is part of the negotiation between this council, not, 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 you know, planning. Planning, of course, will make recommendations.
So I think I disregard, I disagree with that comment, 'cause, because planning is responsible for ensuring that the resources within the town, that is their sole purpose, is to make sure that everything fits, that the zonings are in place. And I know town staff's done a wonderful job of doing that, but we've talked about the Route twenty-seven traffic corridor study. That has to be done, looking at how much stuff's gonna be going through there prior to, what are we gonna put in this zone? What if we can't handle tractor trailers going down the middle of the street because we wanna put in a big manufacturing complex? We wanna end up putting in a small deli? We have, uh, Conchettas and a whole bunch of other small delis down on Main Street right now. Are they gonna be impacted if we open up a deli? And I know one of the things I D A had talked about, just throwing out things from the last time, they wanna open up an Applebee's or whatever, and planning said absolutely not at the time. So there's a lot of things there that I would just request from my personal well-being of what are they planning on before we start making recommendations for planning of what should be in this zone and what shouldn't be in this zone?
Okay.
Because I don't know what their ultimate goal is.
Well, their ultimate goal, and again, the discussion's good, their ultimate goal is discussed to us, is an employment campus. Now, again, what actually goes in there?
I mean, if somebody works there.
Yeah.
What actually.
And jobs, and, and that's what it is.
And, and, right, what actually goes in there is, depends on the O P E zoning. So it's the, the, it's this message, that, that, some of these points that the chairman, Butts, and I are hearing that will go to planning is, is part of that discussion, so that, that's good.
Bob, I, I've just, it looks like we're kinda going this way, so if we can, can, or do you, Bob?
All right.
The only question I would have, uh, can they go ahead and do this without being annexed into town? They can do what they want to there, they own the property, do they have to be annexed into town to do?
That's what I was, that's what I was going to address.
Well, they could, they could pass a search plan there, right?
They can't.
Nah, I don't know that they can. It becomes cost prohibitive at some point.
It's too much money for them to do.
It becomes cost prohibitive at some point.
Ken, you're on the right track. They're, they're gonna do something there. They have paid over twenty-four million dollars for this property, and they've been made to look silly. Okay, so they are going to do something. If you wanna be involved in that decision, you have to sit at the table. I mean, 'cause they'll, they'll do it without us.
That's my.
But we're gonna deal with it and get none of the return.
Right, so, so Ken, to your point, I think, and I'll take a leap here, to your point, again, playing, the, the, the question here is what guidance do we provide planning? Because again, planning just need, planning's responsibility is to come up with an ordinance. This is what you can and can't do. But Ken, and Bob, you bring up, the point that you bring up is, the leverage, 'cause each side has leverage. The leverage is, the county could decide just to do what they want. The leverage we have is, well, you really can't do that much. So that's, but that, remember, that negotiation about who gets what, and the final details of the O P E zoning gets voted on here. It's the council that makes all that decisions. Right now, planning is just being asked to now start negotiating with the I D A on what an O P E zone. Yeah, what it look like, so, so, but, but your point's very well taken, so is Bob's, that the, the leverage part of this, well, we can use, we, we'll take that, but not this. That, those.
That's not the question we're at yet.
That's not the question we're at yet. So, but we gotta get to that first step to get an O P E zone that planning is comfortable with, the I D A is comfortable with, and then all of the concerns you bring up. Scott brings up about shrinking land, you bring up about what really goes in there, that comes here, Scott.
So I guess the one question I would ask is, last time I was on planning, there was a draft of O P E and M D X and.
There is.
There is.
So what state is that, and where is planning on looking at that?
Right, so the draft, the, the draft has come out of subcommittee, so to speak. So there's a subcommittee that worked on an O P E ordinance, that's in draft form. Now, the next step is, now the, the draft, the, the subcommittee that did the O P E draft, now that goes to planning, and planning is gonna meet with I D A, similar to the process that we used for the master plan. Planning met with the town council, right? And, and a lot of discussion and negotiation took place. So that's where we're going next. The reason for my question tonight is, what guidance do we wanna give planning as planning gets together with I D A? And all of these points I, I will bring to planning.
I think Bob's.
I wanna yield to Bob, yeah. I didn't know he was finished.
Bob, are you done?
No, I, I basically did finish. The only thing I don't want us to do is to cut our throats by saying, well, we're not gonna have industrial, because industrial comes in wide varied forms. Uh, you know, I, I keep hearing that, you know, we're not gonna do any warehousing.
The O P is very specific, if you read it. It's a very specific thing, very detailed.
So, you know, I just, that, the only advice I could say is, don't start limiting things before you really understand what those things are.
Okay.
The only industrial it allows is nuclear waste zones.
And, and Bob, to your point, so, I mean, again, all of this, all of this, and Chairman Butts is here, or the planning commission's here this evening, all of these, the, this dialogue will go back to planning.
Right.
But do you realize it's the council that passes the ordinance? So the council, we wanna do a cooperative, and we will do that.
And, and I would, I would much prefer to convince them to write something as opposed to us bring it here and change it.
Absolutely agree.
Okay, and that's.
My two comments are gonna be something that the actual, I think, the planning does control exclusively. Uh, it should be master planned. They, if you, if they tell you they can't master plan it, don't buy it. Master plan it. You need to have a general layout of what it's gonna look like, what the screening's gonna be. It has to be master planned. Also, set some design standards. It just can't be, we're gonna master plan it, it could be like this. They will give you certain choices, and a developer recently showed me how they master plan a property with design standards, and they'll have four or five different buildings you can build, have design standards, master plan it, let's know what we're getting into.
Because the design standards could go into as part of the O P E with the recognition that it has to be.
Those are my two big things.
And that's.
So you're not gonna put up corrugated steel buildings out there?
Right.
That's right. Design standards, so, that protects you from a lot of those evils.
Right, and yet another example of why are the, why the mayor started out on the planning commission.
That I did.
Because he still retains that expertise, okay.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I think that, that, um, covers the discussion, and that we'll bring back to planning, but I appreciate it. Uh, that's my report, now.
Okay, I think Doc O'Brien had some real questions about what you were doing.
We're gonna put a lot of vets over there, too.
Eight oh six Park Avenue. Um, when, when you look at a non-residential property like that, and you're trying to utilize it for sources, I think we might forget that any of those resources are gonna be used for employment purposes. But if you're making widgets at a factory, or you've got an office park or whatever, what is the town getting for that, other than the land, uh, and the well and stuff like that?
And tax dollars.
Tax dollars.
And the tax dollars.
It's like nothing.
But, but, but the community isn't gonna be able to use those widgets. They're gonna be putting up with all the traffic.
We get ball fields.
No, I know, but that's the balance, I mean, versus some commercial development or, or development where shopping can take place, for example, where, where, where citizens can utilize that.
It's what do we get out of it in return?
Well, that's, that's, uh, maybe a grocery store, not that we need another, but, but some, some use that, that, that the citizens can use rather than a pass-through, a widget factory that's gonna use our roads, our infrastructures, tractor trailers, our resources, that's gonna leave our town, and, and we're not gonna utilize it within town.
Hospital.
Now, I understand there's a balance.
That could be hospital.
It could be a hospital.
Taxes and stuff like that, but if all of the product that's made there is leaving town, employment's employment, you're gonna have employment and jobs.
Oh, J O J.
I mean, non-residential area.
Well, Doc, you, you and I are spoiled, in that we live and work here. Not many people have that opportunity. That's an opportunity that it could, it could lead to more people living and working here.
No, I, but, but, but any non-residential use is gonna offer that opportunity. If you're making widgets that leave here, then we can't utilize it to the fullest.
Well, people make widgets.
We buy widgets there that we need every other day.
Yeah, it's a good point. Yeah, thank you.
I was wanting to buy a widget.
And, um, Dr. O'Brien, I mean, again, that's a.
It's hard to find a good widget anymore.
That's a point I'll bring back as well, to planning.
All right, um, recycling sanitation.
Oh, I didn't get a chance for my community center task force report.
I think we're, are you done? Do, do, are you?
Yeah, I think.
I'll, I'll hand over my time to you.
Recycling.
Just, but, you know, just, just one thing we should, we should note, though. Um, you know, again, a bunch of vol, you know, volunteers that have really put a tremendous amount of work into the effort. And, you know.
If you don't sit in on these focus groups or these studies or these conversations, you have no idea. I just recently did a site visit to Merrick, uh, uh, Recreation with Amethyst and Mary Beth, just to talk to them about potential partnerships. And at the time that these people are putting in, driving all over the state looking at different community centers. Pete, you've been there, Bob, you've been there, we've driven all over the state looking at communities.
We were down at Ocean City, and the three of us headed for, headed for community centers.
Saw an interesting art facility out there.
They, they had a really interesting art thing.
Just a re, just a reminder that, you know, continuing a reminder to us all here that, um, that these folks are putting a lot of their time and their effort involved in. So just, we just wanna continue to recognize that and appreciate it.
Recycling and sanitation.
Didn't have a meeting, snow, next meeting's three eighteen at seven P M.
How you opening with your budget? I've been, I've been poked to ask you.
Done, didn't have a meeting. I'll ask him at the next meeting.
We'll make sure everybody gets in, make sure you get your input in.
I know, I know we want to put into the budget for, uh, recycle bins, because we wanna get the stock back up.
I just, I wanna make sure.
Is there larger, I'm on the Frederick side, are there larger recycle bins available? 'Cause mine is like over full.
Yes. All you have to do is call them, and they have one that's.
By the end of two weeks, mine is so full, I can't.
Bring you a big blue one?
Yeah, they're one, it's, it's almost double the size of what that is. Or they'll bring you two, they'll bring you another one like you have. They'll allow you to have two. Um, and it's no cost from Frederick County, you just call them.
But the ones that we have, that we give out to Carroll's side, we, we need to replenish her of stock. It's not that they're all gone, but some of them, they break over time, the plastic wears out, so they wanna do this.
For, for Mr. Pete Ballas, um, he get, he was, he was upset at me every year that I was at the liaison to sanitation and recycling, because there's two months out of the year, and I think it is July and August where we only do one yard waste pickup. Pete mows his lawn every day.
Yep, has to keep it in his garage.
Okay, he's gotta keep it in his garage.
He mows it every day?
No, 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 I'm sorry, every week.
He was close.
Every week. Pete is meticulous.
Start seeing for paying attention.
You, you guys work. Um, Pete is meticulous about his lawn, and he tried aggravating the homeowners association in stacking those bags on his front porch. And, and they won, I think they won that battle.
Association ruled a, a thing against him.
So, um, they're, they're.
You're asking the budget for more pickups?
Yes, just those, those two, where there's two months.
I think they were looking at potentially adding pickup needs too, and that was in the discussions at least pre beginning of the year.
Are we doing this just for Pete, though?
Um, no, no, because.
It's the Pete Ballas pickup, yes.
That's what we're gonna call it.
No, it's, it's not just for Pete, because I experienced, I experienced the same thing.
There's something out there called mulching blades, I'm just saying.
Yes, but, you know, some of us are raised different ways, and, you know, we have, we have different thoughts about grass.
Some recycle.
I'm pro mulch, but not everybody is, okay.
But yes, we will look into that.
Okay, that's, thank you.
You're welcome.
We don't need a mulch policy in the council.
Streets and roads?
Yeah, we didn't have a meeting, and a couple of things, a lot of things came up, really.
Always do.
One of them was they wanna report on, uh, Buffalo Road, the traffic count, and, uh, this is an old report, but it was interesting. Ninety-one miles an hour. Buffalo Road, ninety-one miles an hour.
It couldn't have been a police officer.
Was it a fire truck?
Not a ninety-one mile an hour one.
I don't see how you could do ninety-one miles an hour in town, Buffalo.
It was me, I flew in really low.
Probably, maybe a crop duster, but before.
That's between the stop signs, too.
Wow.
Yeah, because if, if that's, if that's what we test, we would test between the stop signs.
So somebody blew the stop sign.
Stop signs, ninety-one miles an hour.
Somebody had to blow the stop sign.
Yeah, you had to blow the, yeah.
We don't, because they don't test where they're at.
We're getting complaints on Prospect Road by Hill, uh, people speeding, so they put up a lot of signs over there. It's, I think it's gonna help a lot on, uh, Prospect. The parking on Center Street, we've got a lot of longer vehicles parking at the angle on Center Street, and they're hanging out in the streets, so the, uh, commission recommended maybe pick some signs up just for some of these places for just cars, or compact cars, where it's real, not too long to keep cars and, I mean, longer trucks from parking out in the street, but to back ends on Center Street. Uh, they also, uh, uh, out to Main Street and, and Ridgeville Boulevard, the film station. When you come out of Film Station, it used to be a right-hand turn only, same way you come out of Plaza. So recommended to go to the owners and maybe put their signs back up. People coming out of Film Station on Main Street making left turns in front of people, same way out of, uh, the Plaza.
Oh, I know, you buy, buy Sandy Spring Bank.
Right.
Yeah, that, that left turn, that no-left turn sign's been dead, and you'll see people go in there and, and turn it, they, they're, they're going the wrong way in the traffic. I've seen that.
Okay, and they, they were wondering about the, uh.
At Sandy Spring Bank.
Flashing red sign at, uh, Marydale, that's working good, but, uh, they wanna know where it could be moved, but according to Brian, they don't recommend moving that.
We talking about stop sign?
Yes, they don't recommend moving that sign.
Well, talk to me before you move my sign.
Yeah, that's, that's a nice sign, that, that's a, uh.
Get your attention.
They get your attention.
I think that was, I think that was a very good, uh.
But they're like sixteen hundred dollars a clip to buy them, but they do the work, do the job, haven't they?
We just, you, we tried that as a test, 'cause we had a lot, Pete, you, you and I actually met down there and talked with Joan.
Yeah, we were out there, it was an experiment.
Joan, Joan hasn't called me once, since we put that in.
We had bad complaints on anybody running that stop sign, everywhere else, but not there.
If, if you can't see that one, you don't, you shouldn't be driving.
You should get a ticket.
Over on, uh, uh, by Health Unlimited on Center Drive, they wanna, uh, limit the parking, like, two car spots before you get there entrance and exits, because when you come out of Health Unlimited, when you look to the left with cars parked way up to the curb, you can't see cars coming, so.
You're not supposed to be parking on that road anyway.
Yeah, on that side, we're talking about the right side.
On that side there?
That side years ago, if you remember.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're.
So they probably just want the curb painted yellow further out.
Right, just like two car spaces back, so you can look up the street and.
We used to do that all the time for places.
Right, right.
Paint the curb yellow.
Yeah, yeah, Brian will just go paint the curb yellow another car length or something to give them the right line.
And we're getting complaints over when you know in front of the post office, when parents park there to get their kids, they park all the way up to Park Avenue there, and, uh, when you come up there, you only got one lane to come around and try to make a right on Park. So, uh, uh, we recommend just putting a sign back, two or three car lengths back, no park from here to the corner. Still that, we got two signs, I'm gonna talk to Brian, maybe we can take, just put one sign to limit cars parking from, uh, to a couple of car spaces back, so people can come up, make a right turn on Park Avenue there in the evening. And the question came up, and I think we might have the answer from the mayor, but it was, uh, are we still plowing snow going to, uh, Nyangham and Watersville Road, and I think we are, aren't we? We're dropping the plows going on Watersville Road to Nyangham.
That's a, that's a good, that's a good question. Monica, can you follow up with Brian and make sure he's dropping his plow?
Yeah, but he, he did something in email, he did.
We were gonna check with the state or something to make sure.
Yeah, I think we did.
All right, we'll make sure it's clear, and let's try to.
Yeah, I think the county said they didn't mind if we plowed their snow.
Yeah, I think we did.
Wow, that's a shocker.
Just don't, just don't cut it to their road.
And another question came up with Sterling Grant, whether we took over the roads over, and you come back, you said you're in the process of doing Sterling Grant, and you come back, you said you're in the process of doing Sterling Grant, or you have taken them over.
They've already started plowing.
And, and do the town, does the town have those roads now or no?
They're not deeded yet, right?
Not all of them.
But the question was, do we plow snows that are not, do we plow snow on the streets even though they're not ours?
Yeah, they're waiting on the deed, as soon as, as soon as they topcoat, the final top coat, that's when we start plowing.
So we have plowed because they don't have to topcoat, because we can hurt some of that infrastructure.
It is topped.
Oh, it is topped?
Yeah.
I thought you said when they're gonna top.
But we do plow now, even though we haven't got the streets yet. That was a question came up, and I didn't know the answer.
Correct.
Okay. And...
It's having your cake and eating it too.
They have a question, a list of roads that are gonna be res serviced this year, and the standards, and Barney has taken care of that.
There is a sketch, there's like a five-year plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Streets and Roads should be walking.
It shifts all the time.
He sent me, he sent me that...
Because we walked it last year.
Yeah.
Made some adjustments, some good adjustments.
Yeah, there's adjustments every year, something deteriorates faster than you think.
No, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about not taking Barney's list, walk it through and make an adjustment.
And they want to know what the status was of sidewalks at Main Street and Woodersville Road, and we got an answer on that from Barney, that there's in the works to be done, correct? And also, same one the mayor bought, but Plumery, what's, what's going in front of Plumery? That's...
They're gonna put a rail down there?
Yeah.
They're supposed to put a rail down there.
Yes, it's too high, think about it, they have to.
Yeah.
They have to.
I don't think it was that high, but...
And now, the last thing is, when you cross over, over, down Main Street, cross over Ridgsville, when you turn to Plaza, he's gonna put arrows in the street to indicate that's, that, uh, street dead end, so you have to turn right into the Plaza, because a lot of people comes up there, and they find it, it stops right there, so Brian's gonna put arrows to a right turn only going into the Plaza when you cross over Ridgsville Boulevard on Main Street. And we're having another meeting on the February twenty-sixth, that's all I have.
And I don't know who just goes to Barney or, and I just saw, when I was leaving here, somebody in the, in the ice over the last couple of days has taken out the street sign at Prospect and Rising Ridge Road. There's this jagged old pole sticking up, a jagged piece of wood, and, and the rest of it's laying on the ground.
Monica, she's making a note.